Led by the Honorable Council Member Rob Donovan. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Tonight, we do not have any special recognitions or tributes. I'd like to welcome everybody to the 2027th Regular Meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held Wednesday, November 5, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilman Donovan?
Here.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Here.
Councilmember Scheel?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here. We show six members of council here. Our Vice President had a family emergency and will not make it tonight. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting that was held by City Council on October 6, 2025. Council?
So moved.
Support.
I think Morgan had support. Toy had motion. Any comments from the audience on the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Present.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the minutes passed six to zero. We're going to jump right into audience communication. The council set aside 30 minutes for items that are not presently on the agenda. So if you'd like to make your way, again, these are for items that are not on the agenda, make your way to either podium. Name, address. You have three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Marlene Noah Katavious, Mireman Road, Livonia. So there has been so much division in Livonia this year. I want to talk about something that I think which should bring us all together. The Livonia Symphony Orchestra is celebrating its 52nd year in Livonia this year. I went to my first concert a couple of weeks ago, and I was amazed. I would urge everyone to go. It's held four times a year. It is on a Saturday afternoon at 4:00. Go to the concert, then go to dinner afterwards. And it's held at the Clarenceville High School Auditorium. This Christmas, the concert is on December 6 at 4:00 p.m., and it's called Holiday Surprise with special guest, the Madonna University Chorale. Try to support them. Buy the tickets online. They've had the same mission ever since they were founded. It's always been to promote fellowship, diversity, and inclusion. That's it. I just wanted to bring that up and urge everyone to go and enjoy a really good Saturday afternoon concert. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Steve King, Coventry Gardens. I want to second what she just said. The symphony is great. I've had an opportunity to perform with them, so they are very, very good. I just wanted to share a conversation I've had with two gentlemen recently. Steve Inman, Public Works Director, Jonathan Westerndorf, City Manager for Franklin, Ohio. They just in Dial Park, they've put in a brand-new splash pad, beautiful splash pad, and it's right by their three soccer fields. So they needed a restroom. So what did they do? They went out and found what they believe is the best restroom in the world. It's an Urban Blue Smart Restroom. It's a modern self-contained public restroom that integrates advanced technology to enhance hygiene, safety, and efficiency. This restroom will be installed at Dial Park. It will provide clean, secure, and low-maintenance facilities. So it is a self-cleaning system. I talked with these gentlemen, and here's what they both told me. This is the best restroom in the world. The city manager said, "I will never install another restroom that is not an Urban Blue restroom." It is self-cleaning, automated cleaning, cycles and sanitizes surfaces and floors after each use, ADA compliant, designed to be accessible for people of all abilities, vandal-resistant design, built with durable materials to withstand damage and misuse, security features equipped with timed entry, emergency alert, occupancy sensors, and even security cameras for exterior monitoring, eco-friendly, uses water-saving and energy-efficient systems to reduce environmental impact, remote monitoring. Maintenance teams can track restroom usage, refill levels, and malfunctions via a cloud-based system. I've been talking about this restroom. I went to TED Talk about eight months ago, talked about, "We have the money from the insurance company to put the best restroom in the world in Rotary Park," and I think we deserve it. You guys are talking about a cinder block restroom. You're talking about the Flintstones. I'm talking about the Jetsons. So I'm hoping you guys will come around to my way of thinking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Genevieve Lenore. I live at 9063 Beatrice Street. I was hoping that we would be able to get an update on what's been happening at Silver Village. We're wondering, do all of the seniors in our subsidized communities have fully functioning bathrooms in their apartment at this time? Is there a qualified manager at Silver Village? Do any of the appointed housing commissioners have any professional housing experience? The U.S. rental housing market in 2025 was valued at $1.5 trillion. Housing professionals are not difficult to come by, and they have market-specific experience that our housing commission should have. In cases where management fails, what recourse do residents have other than filing a costly lawsuit? There are many of us at this point who cannot in good conscience look away while these valuable citizens continue to go without resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Jenny O'Connor, West Chicago, Livonia, one of your City Council candidates. I have two events that are upcoming that I'd like to share with the community. One is being held tomorrow from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the former Livonia Senior Center on Farmington Road, and this is a community listening forum. It's being put on by candidates Patrick Brockway and Eileen McDonald, and all of the current candidates have been invited to attend, and we're inviting the community. The whole point of this is for everybody to be listened to, so please come and share your feedback. And then the second event is on Wednesday, the 22nd, and this event is being put on by the Rotary Club of Livonia. This is a fundraiser for N-Poleo Now, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Christ Our Savior Lutheran Church, and I'm personally very excited because they have a gluten-free pasta option. So I just want to share that with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Well, thank you. Nice to see all of you.
You too.
Christopher Martin, once again, the great state of Michigan, and I'm feeling so much better. Took me about six weeks. But anyway, I'd like to talk about the upcoming election. I know some people have already voted absentee. I have not yet, but I plan on taking that same route. I just wait a couple of days before the election. But I'm encouraging those to get out and vote and think about these mailings that you get to your house, okay? There are some candidates who have never shown up to one of these meetings and stood at one of these podiums and said a word, not one word. They have money to put out these mailings, integrity, compassion, and experience. What the hell does that mean? Okay? This woman is on the Housing Commission. She actually was appointed by the mayor beginning of the year 2025. So, Robin, you know, she's, to me...
Point of order, please?
Yes.
So I'd like to check with our legal department to see...
Yes. Let's see what Carter Fisher has to say about free speech.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, if we could, we're just, we froze the time. Could you clarify the question, Councilwoman?
So we have someone that's disparaging one of our commissioners, and I was just wondering if that's something that is allowed?
While technically council does have rules that prohibit engaging in personalities and personal attacks, I would say that the breadth of those rules may be too broad vis a vis the First Amendment to be upheld in this scenario. And so despite, you know, our personal feelings about whether those attacks are appropriate or not, and certainly council can respond via government speech to counter those attacks, we can't stop someone or prevent someone from making those kind of comments at public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And then just for clarification, how much time? We have 1:47 left on the clock.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you and Mr. Donovan could start the clock on that question, but I'm glad you brought that up. So here's the thing, okay? It's not a personal attack. This is just work-related. Work-related. I don't care what anyone does when you're off that, okay? I really don't care. And I was that way at General Motors when I was leader, skilled trades, and the UAW representative. Trust me, I didn't care what anybody did outside of work. I only cared what they did when they were there. Okay, now let's get off that subject. Let's get back to the flyers and stuff. When you have somebody that doesn't show up and they're in a position of authority already, that should speak volumes that they're not going to do much if they happen to be occupying one of those seats up there besides keeping it warm. That's all that's going to occur. So I'd like you to vote for somebody who's involved and, not just because I've known Steve for decades, but he's actually here and he's speaking, and that's what candidates should do. They should not send you flyers because they have a great deal of money to spend on this nonsense. They should come and speak and give people the opportunity to hear what they have to say. So once again, you have an opportunity to really make a change, and people spoke on the upcoming, the recent downtown Livonia fiasco that the mayor had set up, and that was resoundingly voted down. And what we do, in my opinion, I've been here for quite some time in the city, don't bring old people back to put up there and serve another term of office, and don't put somebody up there who's never engaged, who's too lazy to show up to these meetings and speak because they're going to be lazy, period.
That's time, Mr. Martin. I appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Eileen McDonald, Livonia, Michigan. To reiterate the information, there is an election two weeks from tomorrow, so I do encourage everyone in this room who are Livonia residents to please take time to vote and to also learn about each candidate. There are forums out there that are available for you to watch. There is information, Legal Women Voters, 411. There are Livonia Chamber of Commerce on YouTube. There are candidate forums for that, and the NAACP last week did a forum, and I don't think everyone was there, but there were candidates there at that forum, too. That's found on Facebook. But anyway, to acknowledge Jenny's information about the town hall for tomorrow, everyone is welcome, including, we invited the mayor, so hopefully she'll attend, and I'm also inviting all of council. If you're interested in coming, I think it's important to hear what the citizens have to say. And this forum is a little different. It's not, you know, talking to people. It's listening, and I think that's very important, that any person that's on council or in any government position actually has an opportunity to hear from their constituents. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Denise Micah, Livonia, Michigan. I was one of the attendees of the Housing Commission meeting that happened in September, and I've been to a lot of meetings, and it was very interesting that, how the meeting was conducted. I only knew one person that was on the DS as the people involved, and so their roll call went, "Okay, okay, okay, you're here. All right." And so I'm thinking they're going to follow Robert's Rules of Order because Planning Commission, everybody does that. So then what happened is when I was the first person to talk for audience participation, and I said, "I'm sorry, I only know one person here. I'd like to know what your names are," and they didn't respond. I said, "Well, there are two name tags up, but I don't know who this is because the name tags between the two of you," and so then they put one in front of the person that that was the person, and then that was it. It was very, very unprofessional, and I wanted to see for myself how that was run because of all the information that I have personally received from people in the community about what's happening with Silver Village and Newburgh Village and other places. So then when we got to the residents who were brave enough to speak, no comments were made, not like, "We'll check into it. I'm sorry you had this situation," nothing. No matter what anybody said, there was no comment at all. So that was really frustrating for everybody because they felt like they weren't being heard, and people are scared to bring things up because they're afraid to get evicted because they've heard other people got evicted because they complained. So as a result of the meetings, their community centers for at least the next week were locked. So they were locked out of their community center, and they could call if they want to be admitted. This is like the family room where people go in there, they can read a book in there instead of just staying in their apartment or anything, and it felt like it was punitive to people speaking, and I was very disappointed that people couldn't at least have the common courtesy to say, "We'll get back to you" or something. No words at all. I didn't videotape it, but it just, it was just very upsetting. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President James Hooper, the wonderful city of Livonia. Two matters I want to bring up in front of the council, and I'm asking for some answers on this. I am one of the candidates, remaining candidates running for City Council in this upcoming election, and one question that I'm getting a lot when I'm out there beating the street is, how much did we spend on the facilities municipal package? So what they want to know, what residents want to know, what I'd like to know is cumulatively, what did we spend on drawings and renderings and everything that went into that? I'm not asking for the numbers that were for the yes ballot proposal side, but what taxpayer monies went into all of the work product of the facilities, municipal facilities package that was defeated? So I'm looking for that, and I know each and every one of the council members, with maybe the exception of Councilwoman Bazinski, has my personal cellphone number. I would like to know that, and I know the public would like to know that. And then the second thing, Mr. President, is in a previous meeting, I think it was a budget meeting, Councilwoman Scheel asked about the language for all of the, all of the millages that we are getting taxed for, and I did come up here to the podium since then and ask for that information, and I don't know if that has reached council yet from the administration side, but I'm requesting that as well so that, you know, the residents don't have to FOIA that information for what that ballot language is. I would appreciate that very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, council members.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Good evening.
Hi, Deb Christensen, Livonia resident. Okay, so where do I begin? I was here a couple weeks ago, and I asked, or I talked to the council about some hot mic moments that happened. I did what I said I was going to do, and I contacted the Ethics Committee, but unfortunately, the Ethics Committee here in Livonia is only for fiduciary issues, if there's been a, you know, some kind of a question with financial issues with the council. So, and maybe that's why Mr. Donovan, Council President, smirked when I brought that up that day. Quite possibly he knew something that I didn't know. I was advised to do like what I could do in terms of, I haven't posted anything on all things Livonia, although I probably will. I think that the community needs to know that this is something that happened here, and I don't know if everybody does know. The other thing that I did was I looked into our election laws and see if we can like do a recall, and lo and behold, we cannot because we are within six months of somebody being termed out. So I'm basically, we are basically screwed in terms of any kind of recourse for two people on council doing something, being inappropriate, being inappropriate to councils, to their constituents. And so I don't know what is, what exactly I'm asking for. Yeah, I think I do. I am urging you, Council President, to urge your council members to offer a direct public apology to not only the person that was, it was directed to, but to all of us, because we, again, like somebody was just saying, there is Robert's Rules of Order, and how are we supposed to behave if you guys aren't behaving appropriately? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So is that it? I'm going to wrap up for audience communication. I don't see anybody else. I'm going to move on to council announcements, and before I open up to council, I do have a few general business items. We are showing new data on items 13A and 16. Item 14, which is Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting that took place July 9, will be removed and tabled. We are waiting on minutes, and once that is done, we will report on that. So item 14 is gone. We do have a committee of a whole meeting Monday, October 27, here in the council chambers at 7:00 p.m., and with that, I will open it up to council. Yes?
Amen. Excuse me. I've got some real bad allergies going on, so excuse me. I just want to let all of us, we all know this, but those of you that know Jim Jolly, who served on this council for, what, one term, two terms, was it? Eight years?
Yeah.
Yeah. Jim's mother has passed away, and she will be viewed for the public, let's see, it's Wednesday, I believe, and Jim was her only child, and his, his, what, five children now Jim has? Yeah. And his wife. We want to extend our deepest condolences to the family. And any of you that know Judge Jim Jolly know what a super guy he is, and his mom suffered a little bit with some illness. So we, I would like to ask for a few moments of silence, Mr. Chair, and certainly to pass on our condolence and deepest sympathy to the family. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toy. Let me go to Councilman Donovan, then I'll go to Councilwoman Scheel, then Councilwoman Bazinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a few things I want to touch on. One is a resident talked about, and I don't want to misquote her, but something along the lines of the Housing Commission has either threatened or has talked about evicting members from Silver Village if they attend Housing Commission meetings and speak badly. So I'd like to get clarification from that, because if that's the case, that's illegal, and we should not be evicting residents. I don't believe that to be the case. I don't think that's accurate. I'm shocked to hear that apparently, you know, we're locking doors at the Senior Activities Center. I just don't find that to be true, but I especially don't find it to be true that we're evicting residents if they attend Housing Commission meetings and speak up of anything. It's illegal, and it shouldn't be happening, and I'd like clarification from that, please. I think all of us on council would like to get clarification from that. I know the housing director watches these meetings, so I'm hoping that I can get a response from her, but I don't believe it to be true, but I think it'd also be appalling if that were the case. I heard a comment from a resident about commissioners and making sure commissioners are appropriate for those commissions and have the relevant experience for those commissions. And just commentary, I agree, right? Any commissions, whether they be on the Planning Commission, they should be experienced in all things real estate and land use. If they are on the ZBA, they should be experienced on ZBA matters and legal matters, and if they're on the Housing Commission, if they're on the Arts Commission, and there's a whole host of commissions. Now, those commissions are the appointment of the elected mayor, not the council, but I do agree, if we're appointing commissioners, they should have relevant experience to those commissions, and I'd hope that mayor's moving forward would also do that. I attended a, it was a really nice event. There was a lot of Italians, Councilwoman Toy.
Yes.
A lot of Italians in Livonia, so I attended a Christopher Columbus Day celebration this weekend. It was real nice. A few hundred Italians out there. The food was awesome. So hats off to Christopher Columbus and the Italians in Livonia. Got to love it. Let's see. And then city funds. I did ask our finance director if they could give us a readout on what city funds were spent for the municipal facilities millage, and that's a good question. Just so people know, the city, when the city goes out for a millage, they spend money for educational matters. See the roads and sidewalk millage. When we went out for the roads and sidewalk millage, the city puts out educational information for those sorts of millages. Next year, when you have the police and fire, the public safety millage, the city will spend money to educate the community on the public safety millage. Now, there's two hats you have to think about. There's the campaign side of things, which there will be a committee formed of people from the community that will go out and advocate and ask to vote for the public safety millage next year, just like the same went with the Say Yes campaign, just like the same thing went with the roads and sidewalk millage. The senior millage will be coming up next year, the seniors and community millage, I think it's called, maybe. Don't quote me on that, but the city advocates or educates on those millages, so we spend money for all of those millages, and I know we can get those dollars. Whoever asked that question, we can figure those dollars out, what the city spent on that, but the campaign side of things are separate. So, good question. And then lastly, since my name was mentioned by a resident that's been attacking me for years, and I'm not, I'm no stranger to it. I am a conservative, and I've had people from the Livonia Democratic Club attack me for years. You know, I actually wear it as a badge of honor when you get attacked by people that do it over and over again for political reasons, but that's the game we're in, and nobody forces you to run for office. You stand up and run for office. So yes, I did call a political candidate immature, and I stand by that. That candidate consistently lies to people, and I have freedom of speech to speak up for things that I believe in, and when someone consistently lies to the point that department heads have to come up to the podium and say that's a direct lie and have to reflect the record appropriately, yes, I am going to speak up when I see these things happen. I'm going to speak up for our city employees. We've had to issue a trespassing offense. The police department has had to go as far as issuing a trespass offense against this political candidate for how he's treating city staff. I can't imagine walking into our city buildings and telling people, "You're going to be fired when I get on City Council." So the list goes on of things, and yeah, I am frustrated with some of the political rhetoric that's happening. I'm a resident. I'm a, I'm a American, and when I see these things happening, you try to, of course, be professional and operate with decorum, and I always do that, but you know what? Yeah. One time, I did call this political candidate immature, and that's probably the nicest thing I could say about that political candidate. And I'm going to speak my mind when I see people say really bad things, because I'm around politics, I see what happens, and I hear from residents that don't want to speak up about certain things. So, you know, it is unfortunate that things get to that level, but that's just politics, unfortunately, with some of these candidates, and, you know, I wish things didn't happen the way they did, but I can't control political candidates and things that they do. So, thanks, Mr. President. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scheel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to respond to Mr. Hooper's question regarding the millage language. It is in our City Council Public Hearing Packet of September 29, 2025. It is, one, two, three, the fourth one down. It's information that's 124 pages, but it's on the fifth page. It starts on the fifth page. So from the City Council Public Hearing Packet, found online on our city website. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bazinski?
Yeah, I have a few things that I'll say, and I am gonna, I'm going to speak about the candidate who was mentioned during public comments. Just, you know, so from, I do something called Vote, Run, Serve, which, you know, I do bring up on occasion. It's a commentary-free summary of City Council meetings. I've been doing them for a really long time. I started doing council summaries as a candidate in 2021. I've continued it. I didn't win that race, and I continue to do it now. During that time, from 2021 until, honestly, until I won, I watched City Council meetings on YouTube. on YouTube. I watched them live when I could, and if they ran long and I had to put my kids to bed, I watched them the next day and did the summaries. So just to say that you don't necessarily have to be in this room to know what's going on here or to be engaged. I do know that this candidate has been at many forums that have been held. I, I'm not going to all of them myself, so I can't say for sure, but when I held a candidate forum for my coffee hour at Madonna University in May, this candidate was there, this person is also a commissioner, and the reference to their qualifications, you know, she is a lawyer, you know, she's an attorney, she practices law, which, you know, with federal, the Housing Commission is a unique commission in that it really operates autonomously here in the city under federal guidelines. And knowing the law is important, and I think that is a qualification both for the Housing Commission and to do this work, although you don't need a law degree to do this work. But that was, that was mentioned, and I just felt in fairness that I wanted to kind of share additional information or my perspective on that. Unrelated, although kind of related, because this is related to the Housing Commission, the Emergency Food Assistant Program does monthly food distributions on the third Tuesday of each month, that is tomorrow, at the Housing Commission on Farmington Road, just south of Plymouth, from 10:00 to 11:00. You don't need to pre-register, you can just go there and get a box of food if that is something that you need. You know, please feel encouraged to use that service. They don't check any, anything. So if you need it, you know, go and get, you'll get food provided from the service and forgotten harvest. Finally, I host monthly coffee hours, and I do it at the Civic Center Library. I do my best to get representatives from our different departments, or the administration, or my colleagues, to join me. This month, Ted Davis will be joining me Saturday, the Civic Center Library and the meeting rooms. That's October 25th at 11 o'clock. I go over things that have happened over the last month on city council, and I also listen to residents and see what is going on and what areas folks have questions or where they need assistance. It's usually a fun time, and we have Looney Donuts and light refreshment, so please feel pretty calm. Everyone's welcome, including kids, if you want to bring them. My boys might actually be there this month, so fingers crossed they behave. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just a couple things. I'm actually, I have to figure out, I got to pass the gavel, because I do want to make a quick motion on something. If you want to give it back or not. Madam Chair, may I, may I have the floor still?
Yes, go right ahead.
To my colleagues, we obviously have the budget today. I'd like to throw an item into committee, committee of the whole, if possible, to look at the council staffing and salaries. I'm just going to keep it broad.
Support.
That's tied.
Supported by, yes. Go right ahead.
All right. So we have, obviously, coming up in the meeting, we have the budget, and a lot of times, there's been, the council, the council office, we have Sarah, who's one of the most incredible people, best employees in the world, and she does it all by herself. So I'm not going to get too on that, but with the budget, I don't want to belabor the comment to bring it up and talk about a personnel issue, but I'd like to study it a little bit further in committee and make sure that our council office is staffed professionally, especially before I hand that giant thing over in January 1st, which has been good and intriguing, so.
You'll be happy to do that.
Yes. So with that, that's the motion. We'd study it further, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bzinski. Did you want something?
No, no, no. Go right ahead. Thanks, Councilwoman Toye. I agree with Mr. McCullough, our president, Mr. McCullough. I think it's a wise decision to make. It's an appropriate action to take to study how we can bolster the council office and help out Mrs. Cashwish with what she does there and the workload there and study it, and hopefully move it forward. We can have some restructuring. There's been some restructuring that's taken place over the last few years, and Brandon and I know, we've been, and Laura knows, we've been up here for a while now and dealing with the restructuring since, since Judy Preve left in 2021, I think it was. So it'd be nice to kind of study this and figure out what gaps we can fill.
Absolutely.
So thanks, Mr. President.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toye.
You're more than welcome. Anyone else? No? I got to, do I go to audience communication? Anyone wishing to speak to this item? There's nobody out in the audience, so I don't know. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you take the vote on the motion by Council President?
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Bzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shield.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toye.
Aye, and it passes unanimously with six votes. Did you have something else?
If you want to hand it back, I was just going to make some general announcements. If not, you can hang on to it.
No, no, go right ahead. It's all you.
Give it back pretty fast.
Listen, I don't blame people at that point. Okay, I appreciate that, colleagues and audience. Some topics, I do, my neighbor Tom, I got to bring this up, so he watches meetings, he's probably watching right now laughing, and he'd always see me with cheap pens. Next thing I know, I've got an Amazon package with a really fancy pen. So Tom, thank you so much for this. I don't know if it helps me be any more serious to people, but it counts. So thank you, Tom. I also want to give a huge shout out to my Knights. So I coach the 2014 Livonia Knights Travel Program. My daughter is one of two girls on the team. We joined a tournament in St. Marie that was stacked with like AAA top-notch talent, and we're a good team. They battled and battled and battled. We ended up scrounging, going 500, which is really surprising. So all my Knights that are not watching today, because I'm sure they're watching the Lions, wanted to give them a kudos and congratulations for a great tournament. With that, I will go, our great city engineer, Mr. Zalinsik, I'm going to let you, when we get to the city staff, he's got some, some good news with the Orange Barrels actually being removed somewhere, so we'll save that for him. I've already made announcements on pretty much everything. Yes.
Before you leave.
Yes.
I just, you know, I know you're not running for office, but I just want to commend you for being a dad that takes interest in his family, especially.
Appreciate it.
The children. And I mean that, because little girls need that kind of help, you know, especially in sports, and that's a tough game. They play that hockey stuff.
If you know, you're going to get to see some of these kids on the 17th.
Oh, good.
They're probably going to get banned. I'm sure they're going to get kicked out of here.
But anyhow, I wanted to thank you for being involved and leading the charge in a very difficult sport.
Yeah, it's fun, but no, I appreciate it. It's all the kids. They do, they do the things. I'm starting to sound like my dad did, just yelling at them. I'm like, come on. Sound like Uncle Rico, but we'll move on. We've got some important items tonight. With that being said, every, who was it? Ms. McDonald, Mr. Hooper, the questions that you guys did bring up, I'm going to get you, I know they were answered, but we'll make sure we touch base. I just wanted to make sure you knew that. From right now, I'm going to move on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. We do have a quick moment from our chief of staff, and then I'm going to go to our city engineer. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President. On behalf of Mayor Brazin, I'm here just to introduce our new Director of Finance, Benjamin Greer. Benjamin's all of two weeks under his belt now, and he's previously served with the City of Pontiac General Employees Retirement System. He's a licensed attorney, CPA, and a certified treasury professional, and we're really looking forward to having him onboard, so.
Awesome. Well, welcome. There you go. Yes, well, you picked a good meeting. You get to meet the, most of the community.
Thank you for that very kind words. I'm very proud of being appointed to this position of Finance Director. I'm looking forward to serving the mayor, the city council, and the citizens of the city of Livonia. Like Dave said, I'm a lawyer, I'm a certified public accountant. I graduated from Michigan State University undergrad in law school.
Okay.
I worked 20 years at Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, and most recently, I was Finance Director for the City of Pontiac's retirement system. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time. And right now, like you said, two weeks, I'm just getting acclimated to the position, and I'm looking forward to this engagement.
Awesome. No, we appreciate it. Is anybody from council? Feel free.
I'll just say, welcome. As you can already see from our council communications, we have emails ready to go to get numbers from you, so we'll keep you very busy here in Livonia. But thank you for, for coming to our community, and we look forward to working together.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, welcome, sir, and, you know, congratulations, you have a wealth of experience, and, and we welcome you, and have a lot of fun, and go blue.
Listen, I went to Lauren's text, so who cares, right? But no, we're very happy to have you, honestly. If anybody else from council, look forward to working with you, and congratulations on the role.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Zalinsik, talk to top that one.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmembers, just want to let you know, the Wayne Road Bridge is officially open this evening, so if anybody wants to take a ride down Wayne Road, south of Joy, feel free to visit our natives and our, our westland neighbors, whatever, please. But yes, finally, the barrels are open, are removed and open for Wayne Road Bridge. It's almost been a year since November of 2024.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. We appreciate that. All right, there you go. You can handle it. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Items 1 through 12 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on October 6th and ended, and determined to be non-controversial. Council, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Support.
There we go. Any other comments, questions, concerns from council? Anything from the audience on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Bzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shield.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toye.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the consent agenda passes six to zero. We're jumping right into unfinished business. We're going to jump in, this is the meeting of the committees. Again, remember, I announced at the top of the meeting that item 14 will be removed. We're going to jump into item 13, which is the Finance and Budget Committee meeting of September 18th, 2025. The topic is the proposed budget for the Livonia, the city of Livonia, for fiscal year ending November 30th, 2026, and the property tax millage to be levied to support the proposed budget. The public hearing was held on September 29th, 2025. Vice President is out, and so I'm going to go to the other committee member, which is Councilwoman Shield. Thank you.
Thank you, President. We had our public hearing on Monday, September 29th. Members present were Martha Tasnik, the Vice President, Carrie Bzinski, Rob Donavich, Scott Morgan, Laura Toye, and myself, Linda Shield. Our President, Brandon McCullough, was absent. Others present were Eric Goldstein, our Assistant City of Attorney, Mark Toramina, our Planning and Economic Development Director, and Debbie Lichtenberg, our Finance Director. The meeting started, was called to order at 8:04 for this portion of the public hearing, was called to order at 8:04. There were several, there was a presentation made, there were several questions and comments had, and the meeting closed at 8:51 PM. So with that, I would like to make a motion for our budget that we approve Resolution B, which is approving the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget as adjusted, and also that the council hereby does establish a tax levy of 3.9530 mils of the taxable valuation of all real and personal property subject to taxation of the city of Livonia for the next fiscal year commencing December 1st, 2025, and ending November 30th, 2026. And in addition, it lists all the other millages that are there.
Support.
Does that conclude?
That concludes my resolution.
Awesome. Thanks for that write-out. One of these things, and I just wanted to let the public know, obviously, the budget's something that's very serious. There's a ton of work that goes into it. This is kind of the time where we, we've already kind of had our input sessions, we've had a public hearing, so we could sit here and speak on a bunch of items, some council members may, but it doesn't, it's, it's a big deal that takes pretty much a whole quarter of time to do, so it's something we don't take lightly. So appreciate that report out, appreciate the support. I'll open it up to my council colleagues if they wanted to chime in on anything. Seeing none, I'm going to go to the audience. If the audience would like to come up and speak on this item, they could. It's two minutes. Seeing none.
Oh, we got one.
Oh, we got one. Name, address, in two minutes.
Well, thank you. I'll be the one and only, I guess. Christopher Martin, great state of Michigan. The tax rate was mentioned is going to go, going to be 3.9%. Is that what I heard?
Yeah. I'm going to look, just to make sure. It's 3.9530 plus the additional items that are listed. So the valuation for the police, for the parks, the additional mils are added to it. I believe it comes to 13.7. Debbie, do you have that?
You're, you're almost there.
13.79.
Um, it will be 13.7134 mils.
And then the only thing additional to that would be the two mils for the PRDA, for those that are in the PRDA.
Okay, well, I guess I should have phrased it a little bit differently. How much is the increase from what it previously, previously was? I guess that, that would be the question. Is this, is this an increase over last year?
The increase over, Debbie, do you want to answer that question?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Through the chair, the increase will be 0.5496 mils above what the millage rate was last year.
All right. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other communication from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Bzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shield.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toye.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the budget is pretty much approved. Congratulations. Moving on, we're going to go to item 14, is the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure, should I, just for point of order, is it 15, even if we minus one, since we're not, I don't know, whatever makes your life easy from reporting, you just tell me.
Technically, the new item 14, but carry on.
All right. We'll keep it, we'll keep it 15. Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting of October 13th, 2025. It's the subject matter of the Rotary Park Pavilion Reconstruction. Councilman Docno, Donavich, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. On Monday, September 15th, at 7:00 PM, the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee, Committee held a committee meeting on the Rotary Park Pavilion. It's the second meeting we've held in the last month. Myself, the chair, our vice chair, Vice President Martha Tasnik, and our committee member, Councilwoman Bzinski, were there. Also in attendance were council members, President McCullough and Councilwoman Shield. The city officials that were present was Carter Fisher, the city attorney.
Morgan was there.
Our, Councilman Morgan was also there. Thank you for the correction. Carter Fisher, City Attorney, was present. Ted Davis, our Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. Members of the Rotary Club were also there from both AM and Noon Club. Meeting convened at 7:02 PM for the Rotary Park Pavilion Reconstruction. Parks and Recreation Supervisor, Mr. Ted Davis, shared specifics on the project bids, base bids from HRC, Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, it's the architect. They, they were giving us bids from the architectural firm from the low end of $829,000 to roughly $1.3 million. Stand by, my computer's glitching, give me a second. We received nine bids that was originally ranging from the $829,000 to roughly $1.3 million to build the new pavilion, similar to the original pavilion that was destroyed by the tornado in 2024. The city only recovered roughly $260,000 in insurance replacement costs. Mr. Davis explained that his department has spent the last several months reviewing alternative plans for the Rotary Pavilion, such as precast restrooms and pavilion kit options in the marketplace since the committee last met. The issue is that those will not be comparable to the previous Rotary Park Pavilion, and the residents would get a lesser yet, yet lesser and less functional product. So there's discussions around just a pavilion kit product and these precast restrooms, which would not be with, in standing with what was previously before. The CXT precast restroom is roughly $130,000, and the 40 by 50 pavilion kit is roughly $115,000. This does not include various site work and other associated construction costs. Since the committee's last meeting, the city was recently notified in early October that Livonia State Representative Lori Potzki from the 17th House District was able to secure roughly $300,000 in the 2025-2026 state budget. This appropriation is only allowed to be used towards the Rotary Park Pavilion. Since that budget announcement, the Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Department has asked to shift gears and ask the council to refocus their efforts back to the originally proposed plan that is more expensive but comparable to what was previously there. Parks and Rec will work with the architect, Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, to re-scope this proposal and look for cost-cutting solutions and alternatives and value engineering options to build a cost-effective product. The city bids out this project publicly online through a website called MITN, M-I-T-N, so all qualified licensed builders and construction companies can bid on this project, which will be online for roughly one month, at which point the bids are publicly opened at a bid meeting with all bidders present. There was significant conversation about the seasonal restrooms. This alternative plan would include three restrooms that are identical and ADA accessible. These restrooms would be three unisex restrooms so that many residents as possible can use these effectively and efficiently. Councilman Donavich mentioned each restroom having a sink, toilet, and urinal, so as many men, women, and children could use the identical seasonal facilities. Councilman Morgan expressed some concerns over just the three options for the, to four options for facilities and being unisex compared to other restrooms. The original pavilion restrooms had one facility with a urinal and a toilet and one female restroom with just two toilets. Councilwoman Bozinski and Council Vice President Martha Tasnik talked about ADA accessibility and changing area for parents with children. Bicentennial Park was noted to have two unisex restrooms currently. Several more points were suggested and made. This plan will keep the fireplace, which was existing to the original Rotary Park Pavilion. There currently is a fireplace, there was a fireplace at the old pavilion. The pavilion costs the city roughly $1,000 a year in DTE electricity. There are no heat or AC in the seasonal restrooms. Parks and Rec Department wants to build a cost-effective project that is comparable to what was originally there before. Parks and Rec expressed a willingness to work with council members to get this project approved and built responsibly. Parks and Rec also contacted other communities to compare pricing and see what they saw out in the marketplace and what was comparable to those communities for costs. The Rotary Club, this is really great news, the Rotary Club of Livonia, AM and Noon Club had members there, and they've committed roughly $100,000 in private donations for the park pavilion and restrooms, as long it's similar to what was there before. They have made it clear that they want durable and comparable pavilion and restrooms, and they are looking forward to donating private funds. If you'd like to donate to the Rotary Club of Livonia for the Rotary Park rebuild, you can mail those checks to 376375mileroad, suite number 179, Livonia, Michigan, 48154. And again, those can be made out to Rotary Club of Livonia for the Rotary Park rebuild, 376375mileroad, suite 179, Livonia, Michigan, 48154. There was continued discussion around traditional two-by-four stick built by Councilman President McCullough. Councilman Donavich expressed some concerns about long-term durability and the cost of two-by-four wood structure compared to a block structure. Councilman Morgan explained that these pavilions can be used as a short-term storm shelter, and a wood structure isn't potentially as safe as a masonry wall. When you add exterior sheeting, brick and/or siding, interior insulation, interior sheeting, and some type of finished wall like drywall are the material, is the city actually saving money compared to a decorative masonry block product that doesn't need all of additional building materials? So there was significant conversation, really good conversation with the council members. Council President McCullough and Donavich talked about the burdensome regulations added to the bidding and construction process, making this plan potentially more expensive and more difficult for smaller construction companies to bid. However, the city does have a procurement process and ordinance that all department heads must follow. So there was really good conversation with Council McCullough, the President, and other council members about looking for efficiencies and some removal of red tape potentially. A question was raised on how the city can cut that red tape so we don't inadvertently make things more expensive to build projects in the city of Livonia. Councilwoman Scheel asked about timing and logistical questions. The Parks and Rec Department will re-scope the plans and go back out to public bid for the roughly one month, then review all bids and references, come back before the city council in the new year, with construction possibly taking place in the spring of 2026. The meeting adjourned at 7:51 PM, and the council is discharging this item from the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee for further consideration of the subject matter of Rotary Pavilion and reconstruction. And Councilwoman Bozinski asked that this hereby matter of the Rotary Park reconstruction be referred to the administration for the recommendation to re-scope, full rebid the project that will comply with code requirements. Thank you, Mr. President. And again, thank you to all the council members for attending. We appreciate all of you, and we spent a lot of time on this. So thank you to all the council members that dedicate a lot of time to this. Thank you.
No, thank you for that report out. Yes. Yeah.
Oh, is it okay? Okay. If I may, we're not going to have any heat in this building at all. And my second question is, that park is getting used more and more. Anytime you go by there, it's packed. I don't know how it is in the winter. I still go by there, but, you know, I haven't taken note of that. But I just wondered if the parameters of this, I know we're having problems paying for it, yet many have come forward and have donated. Was there any plan, is there any discussion on maybe enlarging that a bit more? With all the people that go there, it's amazing. I try and take the twins over there, and it's like almost impossible to find a parking place, you know, on some days and things like that. So just a question to throw out to you guys. I'm sure you've done a lot of work on it.
A little bit, yeah.
Thanks, Mr. President. Councilwoman Toy, I know Council President McCullough had some significant conversation with the Parks and Recreation Department, Ted Davis, and they're going to be working on some things together. I know Councilman Morgan has expressed some interest talking to Ted Davis, Parks and Rec Department. So I think a lot of council members are going to be asking questions and having those kind of one-on-one conversations about how to keep this cost-effective, but also, to your point, it's such a signature park, making sure that, that a really nice product is built there, but again, being cost-conscious. I know there's conversation about the equivalency between Bicentennial Park and Rotary Park, but then I know Councilwoman Bozinski's been working really hard on some of the other parks in town that maybe don't see as much foot traffic but getting investment. So I guess, rest assured to your question, Parks and Rec Department is getting it from every council member, investing in these parks. I would just say, you know, really great job to Rotary Park and committing roughly $100,000. Hats off to State Representative Lori Potzki for securing $300,000 from the state budget. That's not easy. There's hundreds some odd state lawmakers all divvying for dollars, as you know, as a longtime member of legislature. And then the $260,000, give or take dollars in insurance money. So we're getting closer to that, that 600 some odd thousand dollar mark. So I know a lot of council members are working with Ted Davis to figure out a solution there. Thanks, Mr. President.
Before I go to Councilman Scheel, I, I was going to say too, if Ted Davis is in here, he did personally reach out to pretty much anybody, any of the council members that, including myself, and I appreciate that. That's kind of bringing in the team effect on things.
Certainly.
Even before it gets brought back, we've got the winter, and, you know, obviously, I don't want to use the snow word, but, you know, things are going to kind of start slowing down for construction, so this might be a good planning opportunity to hit it in the spring. Councilman Scheel.
Mr. Donavich, I believe we need a resolution put forth.
Yes.
For those two items that you stated.
Yes.
So are you putting that resolution forward for the two items?
I'll offer an approving for the Rotary Park Pavilion Reconstruction for the administration for the recommendation to re-scope, full rebid the project that will comply with code requirements.
Support.
Perfect. So there's that one. Before we even move on to that, counsel, do we have any questions, concerns, comments on this item?
Does that motion include a discharge from committee for this subject matter?
Yes, please.
Then that covers them both.
That's what I was going to do.
Is that cool?
Yes.
All right. So that we have a vote to put a report and recommendation from the administration and to remove it from the committee. Counsel, any other concerns, comments? Anything from the audience? Name, address, in two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jim Bigga, Lake Shore Road, Livonia. I would just like to add, as an attendee to that meeting, there was no public notice that there would be no public comment during that meeting. And I mentioned with the City Attorney that that may be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, and we are not pursuing that, but it should have been mentioned ahead of time, and I would like that in the notes to the meeting, that it was failed to notify the residents in attendance that we were not allowed to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve King, Combs Regardance. Okay. This should have never happened. The insurance company offered to fix the roof, but the structure was tore down. Someone in this community, I don't know who, gave the green light to tear that structure down. I've heard Ted Davis speak about it. There was no structural engineer call. There's no bill for a structural engineer that said that that was an unsafe structure. Again, I saw, I got pictures of it on my phone, it damaged the roof. Insurance company offered to replace the roof. So they tear it down, we have to get money from the state, 300,000. Hat in hand, the Rotary gets 100,000, and it should have all been avoided. There has to be some accountability in this process. Somebody is responsible for this and has to be held accountable. I put a proposal together for $550,000 months ago with the urban blue bathroom. If that's not the best bathroom in the world, prove me wrong. Prove me wrong. And I also put together a proposal for a 40 by 60 pavilion. But because it comes from me, it's toxic. That's the problem with this council. An idea should be able to come from anywhere in this community. Good, it doesn't matter who brings the idea forward. If it's a better idea, you should jump on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Jenny O'Connor, West Chicago, Livonia. I just wanted to speak on a couple of topics pertaining to the Rotary Park Pavilion. First, as we look toward rebuilding and improving the parks in our city, I'd like to encourage the city to consider unisex, single-user restrooms. This doesn't have anything to do with politics, it's about practicality, safety, and accessibility. Parents of children with different gender, caregivers assisting an elderly or disabled loved one, and families enjoying our parks all benefit from private but flexible restrooms. They also reduce wait times, simplify maintenance, and are often more cost-effective to build and operate than separate gendered facilities. I'd also like to advocate for changing tables in all of the restrooms, because women are the only ones who change diapers. Second, I'd like to ask what steps have been taken by council or our administration to involve our local skilled trade labor unions in the Rotary Park Pavilion construction. Several of these organizations, specifically Plumbers Local 98 and IBW Local 58, have stepped forward and generously volunteered to contribute their time and talent as part of this community service, their community service efforts to help rebuild the pavilion. So their participation could allow the city to save money while ensuring high-quality craftsmanship that reflects community pride. Livonia has an abundance of talent right here at home, so people willing to roll up their sleeves and help should be listened to. With thoughtful collaboration and creative problem-solving, I think we can design a space that serves everyone, stretching our taxpayer dollars further and bringing our community closer together. Thank you.
Thank you. You got, hey, look at, we got a duel here.
Hi, Cindy Fleming, Livonia. Just piggybacking on what Jenny O'Connor just spoke about and what Mr. Donavich gave in the summary, true ADA accessibility needs to include an adult-sized changing table. A child-sized changing table only can be used for a child up to 60 pounds, usually. You'd get a lot more use, and to really, truly make those restrooms be ADA accessible, please include at least one of them to have an adult-sized changing table. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Karsinski, 1948 Bainbridge Avenue. Just one comment about the Rotary Park. It seems that the city does not have a plan for Parks and Recreation the way this issue has all developed, especially to Councilmember Toy's comments about parking. So I would just like to emphasize with city administration that we do need a Parks and Rec plan, just like we need a plan for every other department, and I'm looking forward to hearing from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Lynn Mills, Plymouth Road, I wore it tonight. It sounded like a councilperson was calling Mrs. Bigga a liar earlier today.
Is this, so this is, are you speaking on the Rotary?
Is, oh, we're not at the end yet. I apologize.
No, 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 you're good, you're good. I'll, I'll remind you. Any other audience communication? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
The motion carries six to zero. Point of clarification, Councilwoman Bozinski brought up, the, the absence of public comment was on the, the meeting prior to the one that we just spoke about, but it's now on the record in these minutes, so.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I know there's been some conversation about quote-unquote "absence of public comment." There was public comment from multiple members from the Rotary Club Pavilion that are very engaged in the process, so they're from the public. One, two, committee meetings are different structures than necessarily regular and study meetings. So we heard from committee members, we heard from departmental staff, we heard from members of the audience, and the meeting went late, and then we adjourned the meeting. So this, this, this is being mischaracterized, that there was not 100% public audience communication, because there were people from the public that did talk, and we had a very good conversation back and forth. And yes, thanks for that clarification. There were two meetings. I had a glitch in my computer, and I read the wrong dates. The second meeting was October 13th, and there were multiple members from the community that were there as well. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bozinski.
I wanted to just comment, you know, on our Parks and Recreation or some of the comments that were just made regarding the decision to demolish the building as a whole. Our directors, our department directors work incredibly hard. Many have committed years and decades to Livonia. They prioritize the residents and getting the best for our citizens. In the relation to Parks and Recreation, I, my day job is in media and going to different parks across southeast Michigan. I can tell you that Livonia has the best Parks and Recreation Department. A lot of that is based out of the Kirksey Recreation Center and the amenities that we have there. We do have strategic plans. We have five-year plans for our parks, you know, and sometimes we're able to make those investments, and unfortunately, sometimes we're not. For instance, this year, there were two parks that were on the strategic plan for Parks and Recreation to be in the budget for improvement, Hillcrest Park, and I believe it's Elm Park, at Plymouth and Inxter. There was no budgeted funds for either of those parks improvement, although that was part of the strategic plan of Parks and Recreation, but we didn't have the money. Fortunately, for Hillcrest Park, I was able to work with the administration, and we can use CDBG funds to do a park improvement there in the next year, beginning next summer. But I just wanted to just let residents know that all of our department heads work very hard, that they're communicative with council, responsive to residents, and, you know, doing the best they can for our community with the resources that they have available to them, and they do have strategic plans. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 16 is unfinished business. It's a site plan petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-08-08-07, submitted by Silken Gold on behalf of Sheets, requesting plan approval pursuant to ZBA Appeal Case Number 2025-03-04. Approved May 6, 2025, to construct a gasoline service station, limited service slash carryout restaurant, including a drive-through window at the southeast corner of Newburg Road and Eight Mile Road. Councilwoman Toy.
I would like to offer a denying on this petition.
Do we? Excuse me? All right, all right, all right. Counsel, do we? Do we, do we have support? I'm going to pass the gavel to, this would probably, this is going to go back. She's the motion maker.
It's already.
It's going to go to Rob.
It's got to go to Rob.
I will support.
Let me get my whistle out real quick. Okay, so this is my first time chairing a council meeting all these years. So bear with me, everyone. There's been a motion made by Councilwoman Toy, and it's been supported by President McCullough. Is there any discussion on? Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilwoman Toy.
Well, I just want to say that when we had the public hearing back 100 years ago now, all of us worked very hard to look at it and look at some of the flaws of that piece of property. I'm not knocking Sheets as a business that has come to our community ass with their petition, which they have every right to do, but I really, truly believe in my heart of hearts that this is the wrong location for this particular operation, especially.
Everyone, if you could please allow each council member and member of the audience to talk. This evening, we're going to have council members, they're going to talk about the motion, and they're going to go back and forth, and then we're going to go to the petitioner, and then we're going to go to the audience. So, I'm asking you to stop with applause, let's conduct the meeting. People will get two minutes to speak, whether they be supportive or against it, and we're going to go on as long as people want to talk about the item. I'm going to ask people to, allow people to speak without applause and interruptions in between each time of talking. Some people don't want this project to be happened, some people do want this project to happen, so I'd like to conduct official business, please, in adult manner, without all the audience and miscommunication when not. Go on, please, thank you.
To continue, basically, I felt that this was the wrong location for this particular operation, considering all points, and, you know, Sheets represented a good case, I think we presented a good case, but it was also pointed out in the last meeting, there's four, there's four things that come, that I'm concerned about as well, that became apparent more so, and especially the environmental concerns. I was very cautious on that with the Friends of the Rouge and others. There's a lot of property in Livonia yet, there's somewhere else that that could be, we would welcome them, just not in this location. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right. Council President McCullough, then Councilwoman Buzinski.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Yeah. I will not be supporting this. The layout and the aesthetics of the proposed site plan would have a negative effect upon neighboring properties, and then our overall zoning guide even says, does it create harmony to the surrounding area? And in my honest opinion, it does not. So, for those reasons, I will not be supporting the site plan on that location. Thank you.
Councilwoman Buzinski.
I have voted to approve one new car wash in the city of Livonia, and it was because we had a consent agreement from a judge that required us to approve the car wash. It was a judgment brought from a previous council and a denial of a development proposal. We were sued, and in the lawsuit, the original site proposal then had included car wash. It was added after the fact because we lost, basically, the legal suit. We couldn't afford it because entities have a lot of money and they have a lot of legal power. And so what happened was, we had, we have another car wash in Plymouth Road, and we don't even have the original development that was brought forward and proposed, and we don't have any control over the site plan that was presented related to the car wash. We just get to approve that a car wash gets to be there because we were literally required to approve it by a judge. These are the consequences that we face here when we have situations like this. I was easily, easily, no, you can watch the videos from when the zoning for this was brought forward, an easy no. I, you know, there was a lot of debate. I didn't say much of anything because I was confident in my vote and the reasons for it. That was appealed, and now a gas station can go there. A gas station can go there, and the current proposal that is being, that is before us does not violate any of our city ordinances. And right now, on our agenda is a site plan approval. That is what we're being asked to approve, not whether or not we want a gas station, but whether or not that gas station fits with our ordinance. And the consequences that come from not addressing the issue at hand are serious, and they're serious for the entire city of Livonia. We passed our budget earlier today. Our general fund, which is the money we get to play with to get things done, 77% of that goes to staffing. Over 50% of that general fund goes to staffing our public safety. That means we have 23% of our general fund to play with, if you would. As I noted just moments ago, our Parks and Recreation Department has strategic plans for park improvements that aren't being done because we don't have the money to do it. This, these.
One second. Can you, can the audience, please, we're trying to be respectful, no booing from the audience, we're all adults here, stop interrupting, please. People, I don't want to interrupt people, we're going to give everybody two minutes to talk, don't interrupt the councilwoman, don't interrupt anybody in the audience, please. Let the councilwoman talk, let everybody speak, everybody gets their fair time, we want to be respectful to everybody. I'm asking, please. Go on.
The decisions that we make here at this dais have consequences for the entire city, the long-term future of our city. I don't want a gas station at this corner, but again, a gas station is allowed at this corner with our current, with the waiver use that they received. The question now is on the site plan, which we have had feedback for. We're not going to have a drive-through at this gas station, we're not, they're not going to make it a red building like they normally do, they're going to put more brick, they're not going to do music outside, they're not going to have lighting, the signage is going to be minimal. We have control over a site plan right now. I do not believe at all, not even a little bit, that we would win a court case. I don't believe at all, not even a little bit, that if we deny this tonight, that we will not be sued. And with that in mind, I will not subject the city of Livonia to a lawsuit we cannot afford, and for consequences that then the city, Sheets would be able to do anything they wanted. They can have a drive-through, they can have it be red, they can have it be loud, they can have it with tons of light. That is the reality that we live in, and I don't like it any more than anyone else does. But I will not, I cannot, in good conscience, vote against a site plan that meets our city ordinances when they have the ability to build a gas station there because they got a variance. So, I will not be supporting the denial.
Thank you, Councilwoman Buzinski. Anyone else from Councilwoman Morgan?
No, I don't have anything.
Oh, okay, sorry. Anyone else from the city council? We're going to go to the petitioner.
Good evening. David Bruckelmeyer, with Sheets, 39300, West 12 Mile Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan. I do appreciate you having us here tonight, City Council. I would like to note and just thank the city and the city council and staff for the collaboration and just working back and forth. We have had a lot of conversation about this, and thank you for your input. I know we've made some changes on the plans to accommodate some of the requests, so thank you for that dialogue. I am here to answer any questions you have tonight about the site plan specifically or some of the plans that have been submitted. With that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Counsel, any questions for the petitioner? Anyone from the city council, go ahead, Councilwoman Buzinski.
I have not been in direct contact with Sheets, but in talking to others in the city, it is my understanding that you guys have removed the drive-through from the plan. Is that correct?
It has not been removed from the plan. That was discussed at, that was discussed at the city council meeting, hasn't been removed from the plans that have been submitted, to be clear. That was discussed at the council meeting several weeks ago.
Will you be removing it?
I think, I think we can agree to that.
Thank you.
We can agree to remove the drive-through elements. I mean, I would be open to a conversation about turning this from a full-blown drive-through to a, you know, a convenience window. We do have an app where you can order food and things like that and pull up to a window. So, for instance, in the wintertime, say it's cold, or you have kids in the car after a game or something like that, you could order food ahead. You pay on the app and you could scan it and just pick up a bag of food. It wouldn't be a traditional drive-through style.
To be completely clear, I will not support any drive-through window, pickup window, and any development plan at all. Again, we are looking at a site plan, and if we are going to approve a site plan or we're looking at a site plan to approve, my support is contingent on getting the most intense, lowest intense use that I feel that we can get from a gas station, since this is a zoned area for a gas station. And it is not what I want at the site, but again, this is about a site plan. If we get the lowest intensity use for a site plan, again, I feel of responsibility to the city as a whole to support it. However, if you're unwilling to remove a drive-through, that makes my decision a lot easier, so the choice will be, you know, up to Sheets, please be clear about what you guys are prepared to do moving forward. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Right.
Counsel, anything else for the petitioner? Any closing remarks for the petitioner, and then we're going to go to the audience.
Yes, I may. Again, appreciate the dialogue, and we will be willing to remove the drive-through component of the site as an agreement for the site plan approval.
Including a pickup window?
Including a pickup window.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Petitioner, next, we're going to the audience. I'm going to ask Councilman President McCullough to take the time. We're going to go to the audience. Each member of the audience will have two minutes to talk on the denying resolution. So, this evening's, right now, what we're discussing right now is a denying resolution. Councilwoman Toy is offered denying. You can't put up the sign in the easement, the E, it's going to block people's vantage points, sir. Say, thank you. So, each resident will have two minutes to talk for the dying resolution. Please line up on left side or right side. If your name and address or street name, for the record, helps us keep track, and if we got to respond to any residents. I'm going to ask everybody respectful of everybody else, please don't interrupt anybody, whether they're against it or they're for it. Let people have an opportunity to talk about what they believe in as residents of our city. And, yeah, two minutes, Mr. McCullough, when you're ready. Sir, go ahead.
All right. Christopher Martin, great state of Michigan. Let me just, I'm not going to talk about Sheets here. I just want to talk about what just took place. There's no denying, there's no stopping any displays. There's a triangular pattern over there. I've done it in the past, you set your tripod up over there, or there's one right around the corner over there, and there's a handheld mic that should be there for these various occasions. So, you can have displays, you can have an easel, bring your own, you can have one, use the one that's around the corner. Handheld mics should be available because it's part of free speech. That's what goes on at these meetings. You just don't know. But, anyway, let's, let the guy use displays, set the right, the correct location over there, smart, right on the carpet, and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Point of information, just getting illegal, it, when, just, Carter. Sorry.
So, there is no council rule formally banning signage in the auditorium. However, the signage does have to allow people to see the proceedings in terms of engaging with council. So, as stated, that rule is correct. The sign does have to be in an appropriate location, but there's no rule preventing signage. It is part of your First Amendment right.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir, when you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Ralph McNabb. I have a 36372 Fairway Drive. Ms. Buzinski, I would ask you specifically, in the Code of Ordinances revision of 29 October of 2024, chapter, it's Title V, Chapter 5.36, are you familiar with that at all?
I am.
Direct all your comments to the chair. This is just for your opportunity to speak.
I would like to know whether the council is familiar with that chapter. Location restrictions for gas stations. I would ask that you read it. I got a copy here, I'll give it to you in a few minutes. No gasoline service station doing business at retail or wholesale shall hereafter be constructed or open for business within a radius of 100 feet of any school building, public park, or playground, church, theater, or any other public place where the public frequently gathers in large numbers. That's the ordinance that you can go back on and say, it's not allowed. The gas station is right on the, on the property line of Whispering Willows. Thousands of people gather all the time there. Green Meat is across the road at 93 feet. It's within the 100-foot. Please do your homework, please look at this ordinance and understand that is what you have to base your opinion on and your vote on, not whether or not they want a gas station, because they want a gas station no matter what. Let them put it someplace else, someplace that's not going to have a safety issue. That's what that ordinance is for, and it's an inviolable ordinance. Means you can't violate it. You can't just say, let them have it, I'll forget it's even there. Please.
That's time.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Thank you. Ma'am, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Deborah Villarolo, and I've been a resident of Gulfridge for 16 years. I want to talk about the concerns the neighbors closest to that corner have over traffic and safety. We've spoken about this many times, and Sheets wants you to ignore our concerns. They want us to stop talking about it and want you to focus on their traffic study. Well, we did, and it's not good. For example, on this board, we copied page 31 of the Sheets store traffic impact study dated August 6, 2024. The diagram shows outline, shown outlines the projected AM and PM peak hour traffic flow in and out of their gas station. In the AM, you can see 196 cars turning in and 98 cars making left turns onto either Newburgh or Eight Mile. In the PM, 171 cars are turning in and 75 cars are making left turns out. We live here, and there is no way that many cars can safely turn left during peak times. In reality, the left-turn lanes on northbound Newburgh and westbound Eight Mile usually have five to 10 cars in line at each red light during peak times. Therefore, left turns out of Sheets will be blind turns. For example, if you turn left and go south on Newburgh, you will face cars turning right from eastbound Eight Mile traffic. Also, if you turn right and go east onto Eight Mile, you will face cars turning left from Hollstead onto eastbound Eight Mile. These are just two examples of inherent risk. It would be very dangerous and shouldn't be downplayed. Remember, Newburgh is.
I'm just showing 20 seconds.
Oh, okay. Newburgh is also the main north-south bypass road when 275 is blocked. This happens often, and traffic gets even heavier during peak times. Newburgh will also be the main bypass road when Nino's, Whole Foods, and the other businesses open on Haggerty. So, the two examples on this board will likely be worse. Don't buy what Sheets is selling here. Safe traffic flow is of great risk if Sheets opens. We live here, we know better, listen to us. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, Jenny O'Connor, Livonia, Michigan. I just wanted to step up and speak about the environmental implications of putting a gas station in this particular location. If a fuel spill or runoff contamination reaches the adjacent waterways or the golf carts nearby, the city itself could actually be held responsible for cleanup. Under Michigan's environmental laws, property owners, including municipalities, can be named as liable parties even if they didn't cause the release. Cleanup costs for petroleum contamination can easily reach hundreds of thousands of dollars, sometimes more, depending on the groundwater impact in the area. So, at this point, this isn't just an environmental issue, it's also a taxpayer issue. Residents should not have to shoulder the financial burden of cleaning up contamination caused by a private developer, and I just don't personally see any particular scenario in which it could be guaranteed, set in stone, that nothing could ever happen. This is about protecting our environment and our city's health. A single spill could leave Livonia paying the price, literally. Let's proceed responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Zachary Vergoso. I live on Liverpool Avenue in Whispering Willows subdivision. I came to speak today in opposition to the proposed Sheets, and in addition to all the concerns that my fellow citizens had around the safety, noise pollution of the development, I also have a concern with how this development was approved through site variance. That, from my understanding, that process is reserved for hardships in the development process, for small changes to the development within the existing zoning protocol, not something that would be a wholesale change to the development type that was being, that was being built. I think proposing a large change like this through the variance process is abuse of the system and leaves Livonia vulnerable to being bullied by developers, and having this process leaves the city vulnerable, and it's not going through its due diligence. So, that's my bigger concern. If, if this is going to go through a full rezoning If, if this is going to go through a full rezoning process and go through all of its due diligence, I'd feel much more comfortable with, with the development.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Hello, ma'am, name and record, please.
Marcy Moran, Gulf Ridge Villas, Livonia.
Thank you.
I want to talk about the concerns the neighbors closest to this corner have over a 24/7 gas station operation. If you look at the one-mile radius around this corner, all you will see are parks and bedroom communities. It's a very, it's very quiet after 10:00 PM and doesn't come back to life until 6:00 AM, when the residents are leaving for work. This is not a third-shift community, and I'm, you've heard that term, the shift between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. You should consider the argument being made that just because Speedway is open 24/7 at the corner of Seven Mile, Newburgh, that the Sheets representatives say they have the right to be open 24/7 as well. They don't have any rights to anything. All they can do is ask for permission. To be clear, they do not have the right. In fact, only a mile away, Speedway 2 is situated in a bedroom community at the corner of Seven Mile in Newburgh. So think about this for a minute. Almost all of the nearby residents are home sleeping from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. However, for the occasional homeowner that might be up in the middle of the night, Speedway is already there and ready to conveniently fill their tanks, their gas needs. From day one, Sheets has always said in their proposal that they are pursuing the Eight Mile and Newburgh corner just because they're, they are seeking to fill a great need and demand. Well, the reality is that we don't have any unfilled need and demand in the middle of the night in this corner of the city. Speedway already takes care of that, and I hate to say it, they were there first. Sheets can ask for permission, but they do not have the right. Listen, please listen to us, and don't give it to them. There is no need, and we don't want this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Hello, name and record, please.
Hello, Eileen McDonald, Livonia, Michigan. A few weeks ago, we were last meeting, President McCullough asked for a review of the charter and ordinances for council to take this on, and I think this is a clear example of how this really needs to take place. It's a big endeavor, but I think it's something that should be done, because I don't even know how we are even here, you know, talking about this. You, you folks denied this, what, a year ago? And now we're here again, having this thing come forward, and somehow, there was a big loophole in this, you know, for the ZBA decided that it could go through because of the zoning change, or the, a one-time change in the zoning. So, you have to fix this, because if you have this, it's going to happen again on a different, different project. And secondly, please listen to these gentlemen when they're saying you have the right to deny because it's next to public land and public parks, and use that. That is your key. You want to deny it? To vote to deny this and approve that denial, that's your key. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Council, Betsy Calhoun, Grenada.
Technical difficulty.
We've heard many cogent and rational thoughts here and at other meetings about Sheets. Most interested citizens are on the same page. The legal questions loom large, though, and good governance dictates that they must be checked out. For example, is it 94 feet or 100 feet to Greenmead? That's a critical answer. Despite what the ZBA implied and recorded in minutes, this is not simply a case of nimbyism. Sheets needs to read the room. These are legitimate questions about environmental impacts, damage to historic integrity, lighter pollution, water drainage to neighboring houses, and traffic considerations. Sheets is by all accounts a fine company. It's not that we don't want them here. It's clearly the site's proximity to both a major historic resource and a precious waterway that are issues. It's a total mystery to me why this company touts their philanthropy to a community but is willing to completely blow up all goodwill by building on a highly contested site. Do you suppose this is just SOP for them? The legal and procedural questions raised about the ZBA process make me very concerned that our city needs more and/or better legal counsel. The May ZBA meeting minutes, for instance, show members were specifically told by the legal department that if they approved the gas, that if they approved the gas station, then council would be responsible for approving the drive-through waiver. But by the time they concluded the meeting, the resolution approved the gas station carryout and a drive-through. What's up with that? As a city, we need to get a lot sharper about these matters, because instead of being sued by bullying corporations, there may be lawsuits by concerned citizens. What's the point of zoning if the city is always handing out variances? Selling our community's quality of life is not going to attract new residents or even retain existing ones. Everyone deserves a convenient, attractive, and well-planned city, and we should be smart enough to figure out how to make our zoning legally stick. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, if you'd please stop with the applause so we can just conduct the meeting. Thank you very much, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Laura Schumaker, 36269 Club Drive. I want to talk about the concerns raised by the Friends of the Rouge and the employees and volunteers we spoke to from Greenmead. As you recall, I spoke two weeks ago at the study session, and we gave each of you the Friends of the Rouge 2025 Spring Bug Hunt data report. Once again, for the record, each, every six months, the Friends of the Rouge take samples from the, from the waterways to monitor the health of the creeks leading to the Rouge River. The streams that run through all three of the Livonia Golf Courses and through bicentennial and Rotary Parks are part of what is called the Bell Branch. This includes the stream just a few steps down the hill on the south side of the Eight Mile and Newburgh Corner. The stream quality index for this branch rated fair. The water quality rating was fair to pour, and the chloride rating was labeled toxic. In summary, it's not good, and we can't ignore that. Therefore, the Friends of the Rouge urged the city of Livonia to block this gas station from being built on this site and not to downplay the tremendous risk to our environment. Eagle can say all they want about this being okay, but common sense says you should never build a gas station on the banks of a critical watershed. Common sense must prevail here. In the last year, a number of us have had several conversations with the employees and volunteers from Greenmead Historical Park. Not one person we spoke to was in favor of this. Their biggest worries are fast-food litter on their grounds, worries, strangers coming onto the property in the middle of the night, and more traffic on the weekends when they hold their activities. We asked them to come here this evening to speak to you, but they said they couldn't. I ask, who's telling them this? If I were on this council, I'd be angry, because you need to hear from the people that arguably could be the most affected by this decision. Trust me, it's made us angry when we, when we heard this. In our opinion, this is an embarrassment to the city. Everyone should have the risk-free freedom to speak up, and we should encourage it, especially of those most impacted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, Patty Rigio, 37204 Breton. I'm happy to see that I have about 30 of my neighbors here, so I'm speaking on behalf of them. Some of them are going to get up and speak. But you need to deny Sheets at this site. At the very least, you need to not deny the 24-hour operation. There is no demand for a 24-hour business at this location. Here's a couple supporting reasons. Sheets provided a study showing AM and PM peak traffic volumes, but it only shows the peak traffic volumes. What happens in the wee hours of the night when we are all sleeping? How much traffic is there to support a 24-hour operation? The city council should demand an hourly breakdown of traffic between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. With that data, we'd be able to see how many cars Sheets can expect to serve overnight. As a reminder, Sheets has said that they capture 10% of the existing traffic. Well, 10% of five cars is a half of a car. Do we need to be open for that? Further, to support the demand of a 24-hour business at this site, at the May 6 ZBA meeting, the owner of the land himself stated that the former Rite Aid had tried a 24-hours at this site, but it didn't work, and they were forced back to reduced hours. This site has been tried as a 24-hour site. It has proven, been proven that there is no need and no demand for 24-hours service at this site. You need to deny this, Sheets. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Hello, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Faye Nemmer, Burton Hollow. The creek that's been talked about tonight runs through my backyard, so obviously, this is a concern for many reasons. I also speak on behalf of business owners within my capacity within the Mina American Chamber of Commerce. I speak as a resident and within my professional capacity as well. Councilmember Bzinski, you had mentioned to...
Please direct all your comments towards me, please.
I understand. Councilmembers and Councilmember Bzinski had mentioned that she wants the lowest intensity at the site. You're actually going to approve, if you are in favor of this site plan, the highest intensity type of plan in this specific parcel. If you look at the MDOC traffic estimates, there are over 40,000 vehicles that run through this intersection. Sheets is doing this based on a business case. It's an ROI for them. So they're looking for a return on investment. They're not doing it for a few handful of vehicles coming through their, through their gas station. As far as them threatening a lawsuit, are you anticipating a lawsuit? They were turned down by the city of Allen Park ZBA. They tried to get approval there for variances for, you know, a set of various reasons. They turned them down because they listened to the residents. It was just the wrong location. The ZBA is within their capacity, council is within their capacity to do that, to listen to their residents. They didn't sue them there, so I would not threaten the residents, and I would not threaten this body with, with that frivolous reason. Again, this is a self-imposed hardship on the part of the petitioner. The owner of this parcel has been in existence since 1978. They've had tenants in that process, you know, in that property, in that parcel consistently since 1978. They've never had an issue finding tenants for that property. See one tenants, professional tenants such as attorneys, real estate agents, insurance brokers, those are low-intensity activities for that parcel. And then back in January, when this was turned down, and I was, you know, at this meeting, one of, one of the members here said, for the people, by the people, and I hope that you will be for the people, by the people.
Thank you very much. That's time. Thank you very much. Hi, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name's Genevieve Lenore, 9063 Beatrice Street. With the budget still at the forefront of our minds and the knowledge that our current tax rate is inadequate to both maintain the status quo of salaries and services and fund vital repairs to our municipal buildings, it seems irresponsible to me that the city approved a zoning waiver for a business that will have a negative impact on the profit-generating potential of both our city-owned historical park and city-owned Whispering Willow Golf Course. These beautiful assets should feed our city's budget, and constructing a gas station strategically wedged between them along the county line is a massive step in the wrong direction. The Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance is only four years old. It doesn't really seem like it should be so hard for the appointees on the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals to follow it. If we get sued, it is their fault. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Hello, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Brockway, Livonia, Michigan, city council candidate. Good evening. So, I was asked by a resident, you know, why would you want to comment on Sheets? You don't live anywhere near it. And it's true, I don't live near Sheets. It's not in my backyard, it's never has a direct impact on my everyday life, but it does impact residents of Livonia. And to that, I do feel that it's up to, as a community, to speak when the impact isn't directly for, against you, but for, you know, fellow residents. And to that, I say, this was denied previously, went back to the zoning board. There are multitudes of examples of this not being processed correctly through the ZBA, that the ordinance, ordinance variance was not conducted properly. These are all, there's, there's a precedence of not allowing a 24-hour site at that same location. There is, I believe there's a litigation currently pending for the ZBA's conduct, or not conduct, but their procedure. All of this, these should be red flags, these should be warnings that something isn't right here. There needs to be a mechanism in place to where you can pause things until litigation is figured out, until we have a definite, it's 100 feet, is it 93 feet? These are all questions that haven't been answered. It was, it was stated that you want to make sure that you do right by the city, and I just want to point out that the city is its residents first and foremost. It's, it's, it's people before profits, it's the residents, it should be at the forefront. There's a number of red flags that are here that if this continues, what's to say the next company that comes in and ZBA, you know, screws the pooch as far as granting a variance and allows this to happen? So just be aware, this isn't just this, it's, it's setting a precedent for potential legal issues further down the line. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Hello, sir, name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Rosner, Gulf Ridge Villa Homes, Livonia, Michigan. I am a licensed professional civil engineer, 25 years of experience. I have spoken on this topic in front of this esteemed body time and time again. I'm not going to repeat all of the engineering issues that I have with this, all of the environmental issues that I have with this. I'm going to keep this very simple. You all work for us. We are telling you that we don't want this. We need to come first, not fears of a lawsuit. It is your responsibility to vote this down. None of this passes the smell test. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Hello, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Susan Lapierre, Willow Woods subdivision. I was very excited when it was denied the first time around. I have been at every meeting that has been after that, and for me, yeah, I care about the river, I care about the traffic, but mostly what I care about is I live right there at that corner. I drive there. I go and look for the moon that's coming up, the red moon, in Greenmead. I go to Greenmead for the Irish Festival. I go for many activities there. At Plymouth Road in Inkster, you put in greenery, you put in a bench, and a sign, welcome to Livonia. So those Redford residents coming into this west part of Livonia, what do they see? Peace, beauty? And it's cool. Now, our area is the area coming in from Farmington, Northville, Novi. Why don't we give them a piece of what we're all about? Let's have green space there. Let's have a bench. Let's have a little walking area. Now, it comes down to money, I'm sure. The owner of that land wants money. I know that's an issue, but if we can't have the park, and we can't have benches, and we can't have a dog run, like Northville and a lot of other places do, maybe we can just have no Sheets. I don't want to be watching for the moon come up while 30 cars are there getting a burger or a beer or whatever, or walking around the gas station because it's open 24 hours. I don't want a Sheets. And I guess I just ask you, please, in honor of all the people that live in that area, take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Hello, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Katerba. I live in Willow Woods subdivision. First off, I want to thank Livonia City Council for doing your job a few short months ago when voting Sheets down. Because of the Zoning Board of Appeals, in my opinion, violating numerous ordinances, in the process to backdoor this thing, you have to finish your job and vote them down again, please. Again, the people don't want it, and please don't be intimidated or threatened by lawsuits. It's a very bad precedent to set. There's going to be a lawsuit either way, so at least vote in behalf of the people you represent who don't want it. Lastly, I paid attention to the way Sheets operates, and they're all about exceptions. They're special. They think they're special. In Allen Park, they wanted wider driveways, they got denied. They wanted larger tanks, they got denied. They wanted 24-hour, or 24/7 hours, they wanted drive-throughs, they got denied. Please deny Sheets again and send them packing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Hello, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name's Julia Asuhara, and I'm a resident at 36241 Club Drive in the Gulf Ridge community. I want to thank the city council and everyone here who's done their homework and put their heart and soul into communicating how they feel about this. I understand that the city council has to follow the zoning ordinance to a certain degree, but you're also have the ability to deny, and I know that it could open to lawsuits, but then if you, if you don't do it, then anybody with money will come in and do the same thing and, and put us in the same position. So I believe is, was better stated by everyone before me, that's not really a good reason to do that, but I appreciate where you're coming from. Also, I've been at several previous meetings, and I remember distinctly that the owner of the property admitted that while it was in the previous zoning, that both a church and a dollar store offered to buy that property. It's not like there aren't any other options for that property. And as everyone stated, we already have a 24/7 gas station within a mile. This is not necessary here, and it's going to have a big possibility to harm... This is not necessary here and it's going to have a big possibility to harm the land. Please understand that we can't run from every threat of a possible lawsuit. Please understand that it's very important that there are other options here and consider how this went about to get that zoning changed. Please, please think hard about this and understand that all the citizens that have come here and many who could not make it do not want this to happen. Thank you all for your work and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Go ahead sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Denny Berenson. I'm a resident of Deer Creek Homeowners Association. I'll be speaking to one of the conditions the petitioner needed to meet for the ZBA to have the power to grant a variance. That condition was fair in the light of any concerns neighbors might have. As you've heard before, we petitioned the neighbors of the three closest subdivisions to this corner, Deer Creek, Gulf Ridge Villa, and Willow Woods. Ninety-five percent of the residents said they did not want a gas station on this corner. This alone should fail the neighbor concerns condition that the ZBA needed to meet. However, I'll list other concerns that the neighbors have brought to your attention over the last fifteen months. We don't need another gas station, especially with Costco doubling their gas pump count to thirty. This would also be a dramatic change to this corner extending the land surface. An eighteen-foot retaining wall will look like a fortification, not natural beauty. We don't want a twenty-four seven operation at this corner. This is a bedroom community, you've heard that from others. None of us will ever be there after nine PM. Who will be there in the middle of the night? Crime will be there, where we presently don't have crime. We're concerned that with a gas station so close to the creek, contaminated runoff will enter the creek. You heard that already. This corner of the city is supposed to be low intensity and complementary to the, the green areas that surround it. This is the main reason many of us bought homes in this area of the city. This is not a complete list. Other speakers will and have elaborated on these and other neighbor concerns. We wish to remind you that you listened to our concerns and voted no, five to two, last January.
Thank you sir for your comments. Sir, name and record, please. Name and address, please.
Mr. Acting President, Jim Bigga.
Don't give me that title, Chair.
Mr. Acting Chair. This all seems to be, as somebody mentioned, since Vision Twenty-One was enacted by the city. Vision Twenty-One has been a problem for a number of issues. One, this whole zoning thing has become nothing but a nightmare since zoning ordinances were revised as a result of Vision Twenty-One. In my sixty-plus years as a resident of this city, I have not seen this many zoning problems and things being raised to the city, raised to the zoning board, threats of legal actions as I have in the last three years. What did we do wrong by changing the zoning? Why did we change the zoning? Why did we make it easier to do certain things? All we've done is created these problems where we now have people coming in to create new businesses and locations where they used to not be able to do these kind of businesses. Now we're having, God knows what we want to talk about in the next meeting or this meeting. It's all been a problem since the zoning were changed as Vision Twenty-One. I'm hoping that people come into this council, next session, change back to the exit, the old ordinances where we didn't have these kind of problems. We had nothing but problems with Vision Twenty-One and now we have nothing but problems with zoning, with ZBA's not following the ordinances, ordinances not being clear, nobody knowing what a hundred foot means, nobody knowing what ninety-four foot means. There's been nothing but problems ever since Vision Twenty-One was adopted by the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Giving sir a name and address for the record, please.
Greg Ralco, Gulf Ridge Villa. In January, you voted five to two against a gas station on this site plan. Loudly, you told Sheets, "No." Months later, however, the zoning board led a disgraceful effort to defy your decision. Before that meeting last May, I stopped by Carter Fisher's office to learn how the ZBA works. He told me that I didn't need to worry about the ZBA because they never go against the City Council. He also told me that no one ever goes to the ZBA meetings either. Big surprise, we went anyway and we're happy we did. At that meeting, we saw the ZBA violate the state of Michigan public notice laws. We also saw them grant a use variance when in their own room, their own words, did not have the power to do so. Read the sentence on that board, the last sentence. In any, if any conditions cannot be met by the condition, by the petitioner, the board has no power to grant a variance. There's four conditions. Not one condition was met, but they did it anyway. Now, because our city government tried to pull a fast one on its own residents, we had to file a lawsuit in Wayne County Circuit Court. Think about that. Residents are suing their own city. Isn't that wonderful? We don't want to hear any of you say you can't vote no because you fear the city will be sued. Being afraid to do the right thing is an embarrassment. In fact, let me remind you, the city has already been sued by its own residents. Do not approve the site plan this evening and be accomplices to the ZBA and their legal wrongs. You created this, your people created this problem and it's yours to fix, so fix it. We're angry, all right. We also feel betrayed, ignored, and brushed aside. We pay the bills and you're hired to represent us and our interest. We also expect you to follow the laws and ordinances that exist for a reason.
That's time.
In light of everything made public, your answer still has to be no.
That's time. Thank you very much. Good evening sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Nick Lamaco. I reside at two zero one five four Edgewood and Deer Creek Estates. As a bit of an introduction, prior to my retirement, I've served as a professional community planner for over forty years. Worked with a number of different municipalities and did training to Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commissions. I'm a zoning technician. And I'm here tonight to request you to not act on the site plan, but instead initiate action which compels the Zoning Board of Appeals to convene a new hearing on this matter. This request is based upon what occurred at the May sixth public hearing that I attended and my knowledge of zoning law. The process was not transparent. The Zoning Board of Appeals ignored or manipulated its own criteria for granting a variance. The Zoning Board of Appeals ignored the standard for granting a use variance stipulated by state law. And as you just heard, as your own citizens now are suing you to compel the zoning appeals action to be overturned. Let me just touch on a couple of examples that are really important from my standpoint. Failure of inadequate notice. This case, the applicant was only seeking to establish in first case, a gasoline fueling station as advertised and posted on your agenda. The ZBA at the public hearing brought the applicant forward and actually expanded that definition beyond that was advertised. You can't do that. The ZBA also considered wrong criteria in reaching its approval of the use variance. For example, they considered the term practical difficulty, meaning there's something unique to the site. Practical difficulty is not a test used to grant use variances. That is used to grant dimensional variances. The ZBA did not consider what state requires unnecessary hardship, a law that requires that there be a finding that the applicant proved that the current zoning does not permit an economically viable use of the property, that was ignored. And lastly, the Zoning Board of Appeals stated it must find the requested variance be fair in light of the concerns of the neighbor. However, the Zoning Board of Appeals ignored the public record held as part of the rezoning process and ignored those concerns. So my suggestion to you, council members, is have the ZBA reconsider this before you take action. Thank you.
Thank you sir for your comments. Good evening ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Denise Micah, lovely city of Livonia. A little twist on that for you. From what I understand, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the members are appointed by the council. Correct? We've sat in a couple of these approvals or denials and I just can't believe that we have to have citizens of Livonia sue the city of Livonia. Where, where's the recourse if the ZBA does something wrong? Shouldn't the council have a meeting with their appointees and, and there's no recourse? I mean, is there, you know, we have ethics committees and things of that nature? What's the recourse? Why do we have to have these citizens sue the city? I guess it's, you'd rather have the citizens sue the city instead of a corporation. But that's why we're, our group or just even just myself, one change in the city, people that will stand up for the citizens, what's right, what's the ordinance, what is, is this a, just a shame that all these people have to be here and tell you, "Vote no for this" again? And it should be a hundred percent vote no. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Name Jerry Kersensky, one nine four eight eight Bainbridge Avenue. I just wanted to clarify something. A couple of other residents have said you work for us. Actually, you represent us. It's a privilege to represent us in Livonia and we appreciate that you all take that job seriously. I just want to remind everyone of that. And I, I also want to remind everyone that you're leaders and we expect leadership from our council, not somebody taking a step back. So given those two items, I just appreciate that you give this all the due consideration that you have before and thank you for your service.
Thank you sir. Appreciate that. Good evening sir. Name and address for the record, please.
James Hooper, wonderful city of Livonia. I'm reminded of a story. Many of you may recognize it. It's if you give a mouse a cookie. And if you don't know what that is, I'm going to ask you to maybe look that up. I am going to suggest denying this and it's solely on the reason of the environmental issues echoing a fellow candidate, Jenny O'Connor. This would be a devastating occurrence should there be a catastrophic leak at Sheets. Everything downstream from Sheets, which runs through all the golf courses, runs through the parks here in the city, and runs to our, our, our neighbors downstream, all the way to Dearborn. You have a fiduciary responsibility to keep this in mind because it would be incumbent upon the city to clean these properties up. And in addition to that, all those homes that are, that abut to that tributary, their taxable value would go extremely down. I think that should a lawsuit come and be presented to the city in, in a, in a court of law here in Michigan, they're, they're not going to, if you deny this because of environmental reasons and not the ZBA reasons aside, which there's probably some validity there, this alone would, would, it would evaporate in court. There would be no case because you are keeping the environmental issue first and foremost in this. So I'm asking you to have a backbone and Sheets can be a wonderful location, visited by all of the residents in the city.
That's time.
At a different location.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comments on the denying motion? Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else from the audience want to talk? Okay, public comments are now closed. We're going to go back to the council for comments and so Council Bezinski first and then Council McShale.
Okay.
And Council Morgan.
I, I talked a lot on this before and so I would like to address some of the things that were mentioned in public comments, starting with the example of it being dismissed in Allen Park that was denied by a ZBA. Again, in our case, council did deny, that decision was overturned. So a gas station is allowed to be at this site. If I may, through the chair to our city attorney, is that a correct understanding?
That's correct. The ZBA granted a variance under its appellate authority to allow a gas station use at this site.
And the people to overturn that is a circuit court, not city council. So right now, we have the site plan before us. When I refer to low intensity, the lowest intensity, what I was referring to is the lowest intensity for a gas station that is allowed to be at this site. And, you know, it was talking about who's at the fault for, for being in this predicament. And unfortunately, I can't make decisions based on how we got here, but we are here and what are the consequences moving forward? And that is what is of top of mind for me as I am, you know, considering this. And I have been talking to people about this hours of times, including Carter's times. We spent a lot of time on the phone, you know, including one of the things that I asked about was about this bill. Carter, if you could talk through the chair about the liability for the city related to things with environmental concerns.
Sure. So the only, the only environmental liability that I know of that's ever been recognized where a city is, where a city has either created the environmental condition, which would not be at issue here, or where the company that created the environmental condition goes bankrupt and can't sort of live up to their responsibilities vis-à-vis said environmental condition. In that instance, sometimes government funds, although usually not local government funds, but sometimes government funds are required to step in and sort of cover that shortfall. But again, the, no action of the city here would incur environmental liability. The, the city is not doing anything. The city's not installing tanks, the city's not transporting gas to this site. So the city would not be liable from that standpoint. It would only be, you know, if something were to happen, if Sheets down the road, they vacated the site that potentially, should environmental concern spread from that, that the city could be held responsible.
Thank you. You know, it was also noted that, you know, if this is the case, you know, with Sheets pushing forward and, and using its financial advantages to get what it wants, that other people can do this. Other people have done this. Other people have done that in the city of Livonia. And that is what I'm using as my precedent when I'm considering what the consequences of this actions are. You know, we, we talked about leaders making hard decisions. These are the hard decisions. It is not what feels good, what is easy, what I want. Again, when this came to us for a zoning, I was the most staunch no voter on this dais. I share environmental concerns about this being a gas station, but now it can be a gas station and that is not what is the decision before us at this time. You know, this isn't, this isn't what I want to happen. I also, with the Livonia Court of Ordinance and the, the other lawsuit, you know, one, we've gotten dimensions from our planning department about the distances, official distances. I don't know if it's in our packet or not. It is. It is in our packet. It does not, it, you know, it, it's allowed. It's allowed on that basis. The, the other concerns, you know, the, the timing of, it's harder when there's pending legal things going on of what I can discuss. But believe me when I say, I have evaluated all of the information that we have. I have asked all the questions. You know, if, if we want to talk about ours, I know we talked about this at the last meeting. Carter, are we allowed to restrict hours? I know we have done that before with the Walmart that opened up in the city. I don't know what president is. I will say personally, I live by Larry's and I love my twenty-four hour option. I think that is incredibly important just to have as an amenity. But I, Carter, if you wouldn't mind through the chair.
Sure. So Walmart in particular was done via a waiver hearing. This is not a waiver hearing, this is strictly a site plan hearing. So there were different rules at play, different sort of leverage that council could bring to bear. Where the petitioner is not willing in a site plan petition to limit hours and there is no ordinance that pertains, that requires them to limit hours, there's no way for council to make that a condition of site plan approval. And this- In this instance, there is no ordinance that exists currently that would require them not to have a 24-hour operation. And the fact that we have a Speedway in close proximity that does have a 24-hour operation makes this somewhat of an issue of equal protection of the laws and a claim that they could bring as a result. So, we're not allowed to disfavor one business versus the other when they're similarly situated in that, in that manner typically. And that's, that's one of the foremost considerations that we would have when considering whether or not to allow a 24-hour operation.
Mr. Chair, to that point, if I may?
Go ahead.
To that point, if I may.
Yeah, Councilwoman Bezinski, you're okay?
To Attorney Carter.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Mr. Carter, who, which Walmart are you referring to? Are you referring to the Plymouth Road or the Seven Mile Road? I served on council when it was a Seven Mile. We did take them out of the mix for, what did they call it, Black Friday or whatever? And we restricted that.
Right.
You know, and that wasn't only a zoning, if I recall.
Both, so my understanding, and maybe, maybe our planning director can clarify for me there, is that both were done via waiver considerations.
Okay. Yeah. Do you remember that, Mark?
That is correct. And both have restricted hours.
Right. They both do. Yep. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Bezinski, all wrapped up. Councilman Sheil, Councilmember Morgan, Council President McCullough.
So, I just wanted to point out that the first item that's under the site plan petition in our packet that's online speaks to the amount of feet between the distance between Greenmead and the site plan. And the distance, the amount of distance Carrie just referred to it as 153.35 feet. So, I just wanted to point that out since there was some differing stated from the audience members. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sheil. Councilman Morgan.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody, we're here just approval of the site plan. So, this has already been through ZBA. And we're going to be following the law. I mean, there's, there's not a whole lot that we can say, except that we really have no legal right to deny this. So, whether you agree with us or you don't agree with us, we've had both sides of the opposition and support of this. And we need to move forward. This has been a long-going process. So, one thing I would like to say to add to that is, one of the speakers came up here and said, you know, that Vision 21 and the ordinance changes did affect this city greatly. And that speaker that came up was very correct. Over my time in the city here, things have changed drastically. And when the Vision 21 came up, a lot of things changed that tied city council's hands, the ZBA, because there was a lot of changes in the ordinances that now restricted us from doing certain things. With that being said, I'm going to offer a substitute motion.
We need a second.
A second.
Okay, we have a second. We are going to, go ahead.
An approval minus the drive-through.
Well, we need to substitute the motion first. So, any discussion amongst the council on the substituting resolution? Am I getting that correct?
Correct.
Any discussion on substituting the motion?
May I ask that?
It's only unsubstituting the motion. We first substitute the motion, then we will, you can offer a different, a different motion. And it's kind of confusing. Do I need to go to the, do I need to go to the audience for substituting the motion?
Yes, it's a voting issue, so yes.
Could we hold on that motion until the council presidents had an opportunity to speak?
Well, we have a maker of the motion and a, someone that's second in support of that motion. So, unless they want to remove their motion and second, we can go back to another member. But there is a motion on the floor to substitute the motion.
I could speak to the substitute.
Okay. Speak to the substitute, substituting of the motion. We're not talking, just for the audience, so you know, there's going to be two motions. This is this parliamentarian Robert rules of order. There is, there wasn't a denying motion on the floor. And then council members are allowed to offer a substitute motion. The councils will first deliberate if we can substitute the original denying motion. And then after that denying, or after that substitute motion runs its course, if it passes, then we will actually offer a motion, a different motion that was originally offered. I get that right?
Yep.
Okay. She's been doing this a long time. So, on the substituting of the motion.
Yeah. I mean, they kind of go hand in hand. I'm just obviously talking about, I want to talk about the lot, the setbacks through, if I may.
I think we have to talk on the substitute.
Substitute motion.
Yeah.
Which would still correlate to, or you tell me if I'm not supposed to or not.
So, so the debate right now is strictly whether a substitute motion will be allowed.
Okay.
And then the contents of the substitute motion will be debated.
Then I will withdraw.
After that vote.
I will withdraw.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, the motion on the floor is to substitute. Do we still have to go to the public to substitute the motion?
Yes, it's a voting motion, you do.
Okay, so to the public, we are talking about substituting the original denying motion. There can be audience communication on that substitution. I'm assuming, I'm assuming that most of the audience is going to want to talk about why they do not want this. So, you can talk about substituting the motion, but we're getting very into the weeds here. So, if you want to hold your remarks for a upcoming resolution. Any audience communication? Sorry to confuse you, but Robert rules of order and parliamentarian rules. So, okay, audience communication is closed. Clerk, please take the role on substituting the motion.
President McCullough?
No.
Councilmember Bezinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Sheil?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
No.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Okay, council, the motion has been substituted. So, is there a motion to be offered?
Yes. The substitute motion would be an approval with the caveat that the drive-through window would be eliminated, which would be Resolution A.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and second by Councilwoman Sheil. The motion, Resolution A, has been offered mending the drive-through. So, there'd be no drive-through. Council, any discussion? Council President McCullough.
Through the chair to Mr. Tormina, some of my questions go back to the specific dimensions on the property lines. Last meeting, I looked at something, obviously, without a full survey. The way that that site kind of lodges out, it gets a little closer at the, and I'm talking more on the Farmington side, right? Or on the Newburgh side. So, the Newburgh side to Greenmead, that one is so close to the 100, in my opinion. I know we've heard, from what I've seen in, in various, even on GIS, I've seen it anywhere from 95 to 115, depending on where you would look at the easement. The one big one, and this is the one, you know, we can negotiate, that has a survey, has an official survey been rendered to show those dimensions?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So, I want council to be on record that that is not 100% sure or accurate with our ordinance. Secondly, falling under that current zoning guidelines, we're just treating the golf course as not a gathering spot? Is that, is that true? What would it be, then?
It's on, it is public land, and it is, this was discussed at the study meeting, where it was the opinion both of law and planning that that property is not, is not a park in the sense that it is a place where people gather within 100 feet of this property. So, it is a public golf course as opposed to public park.
So, with, with that, through the chair to our city attorney, Whispering Willows has a facility that people rent out for showers, graduation parties, golf outings. I think that those would be gathering spots. Am I wrong?
In terms of whether they're gathering spots where people gather in large numbers, they may be, but none of those spots fall within 100 feet of the gas station.
But the property line does.
The property, the property line does. I agree with you there.
Okay. So, just to point out, I'm adding those for the record. And then I'm going back to, if you look in the legalities, it says creating harmony in the surrounding area. Right? I look in the audience, and I can probably safely say that it does not create harmony to the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Okay, council president, anything else?
No.
I know, to our city attorney, I know I'm not, as the chair, I'm not supposed to participate in discussion and deliberation with the motions, but can I ask a clarifying question?
You can.
Okay, thank you. To our planning director, I know in the packet it references 154 feet, I believe.
153.35.
153.5 feet, Mr. Tormina. But you made the comment that, and just help clarify that for me, the survey doesn't indicate that, you're saying, or?
No. The question to me was, was, had, to my knowledge, has there been a, an official survey to verify that dimension? And the answer is no. We relied on a number of other factors. Number one, Newburgh Road is a five-lane cross-section. All of our major thoroughfares, the majority of them are in rights-of-way that are 120 feet. That is a standard that has been in place for decades. Newburgh Road has a right-of-way width of 120 feet. As you approach Eight Mile Road, the road angles and the right-of-way on the easterly boundary angles with the roadway, increasing that width anywhere from 120 feet as much as 180 feet by the time you get to Eight Mile. So, the 150-foot dimension is the smallest dimension between the subject parcel and the Greenmead property. And that was determined using our GIS, using some of this other information that we rely upon here at the city. Namely, the fact that Newburgh Road carries a right-of-way width of 120 feet minimum.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So, you're satisfied with the dimension?
I am absolutely satisfied that it's in the excess of 100 feet.
Great. Thank you, sir. Council, any more discussion? Councilwoman Bezinski?
Mr. Chair.
And Councilwoman Toy.
Just again, to our planning director through the chair, does the site plan violate any current city ordinance?
It does not.
And through the chair to our city attorney, are we adjudicating whether or not a gas station's allowed to be here, or what the proposed site plan is?
You're determining the appropriateness per the ordinances of the proposed site plan.
For a gas station, which is currently allowed to be at this site?
ZBA has granted a variance allowing a gas station to be at this site.
Do we have authority, do we have authority to overturn their decision?
You do not have the authority to overturn the ZBA's decision. They are an appellate body from this body.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else on council, before we go to the audience for the discussion of Resolution A? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. That's okay.
I was just testing you.
I know. But we also have the option to vote no if we choose to. That is part of our role as all these people pay our nice little small salary, especially for tonight. No, I'm teasing. But I, you might have saw me on my phone. I was trying to connect with a former colleague of mine that serves on the MISHF board, which is a Michigan underground storage tank financial assurance. And, you know, they go after gas stations. That's, that's their role, to make sure of the cleanup and make sure that the spillage of the gas, I'm sure that this particular business has great storage tanks, because they told us that. But in all honesty, the, the state does have a little bit of information that unfortunately I can't get totally tonight. But that question was asked to one of the people that sit on the MISHF boards, board up there. And Eagle enters into that as well, which is, you know, the environmental component. But the fringe of the rouge who are local, that's why I said in my opening that I was concerned about the environmental impact in that area. Because you, you and I both know, when we do gas, and I don't know if it's my coordination anymore as I get older, but my gas kind of spills a little bit out. And we don't, we don't need environmental problems there, as was stated, several creeks, et cetera, feed into that as well as run in, in that area. So, that's one of my big concerns. And once again, I just wanted to voice that, I guess, at the moment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toy. Council, Councilwoman Bezinski?
Yes, to address that concern, that is one of my concerns. That was my leading concern and question about dripping of the gas, not of a massive gas leak of any kind, but of, you know, just that moving the gas from your, the pump to your car. And as it was explained to us at the last meeting, Sheets has a three-stage filter system where they capture the water in the parking lot, and they filter it three different times, and then they remove the toxins independently. And why I'm explaining this is because we do have the right to vote how we want, but there are consequences to every vote. We have seen in this community already what those consequences cost us as a city.
One second. Audience, can you please allow the speakers to talk? The audience is going to have an additional opportunity to talk for two minutes. I want to give everybody fair opportunity to speak about what's important to them. We can hear a lot down here. It's hard to talk and get your point out, and also listen to the audience when they have comments to make, because we are trying to listen. I'm asking again, please. Thank you very much. Continue.
And so, again, we have seen the consequences of what happens in these types of situations. They didn't happen when I was on council. They happened on the prior council. And the consequences to that is development that we also don't want, but development we want even less than what is presented to us here. And, and that is, again, what I cannot ignore when this is, decision is being put before us. And I think it's important for people to understand and remember that we do not actually have a final say in this.
Thank you, members of the council. Any additional questions, council? I'm going to go to the audience for two minutes, but before I go to the audience, to the petitioner, anything briefly, anything briefly that you need to add for the good of the order? I just want to give you a fair opportunity. I would keep your remarks on task and to a specific topic, please.
Thank you for having me back up. At this time, I think we've discussed everything we need to about the site plan. As you've heard from staff, you know, we meet all of the city's owning ordinances. We appreciate them working with us. I'm open to any questions you may have, but at this time, I don't have anything added to the record.
Thank you very much, council. Any questions, petitioner? I'm going to go to the audience. Okay, we're going to go to the audience to speak on the approving resolution. We are discussing the approving resolution, which is the motion on the floor. You have two minutes. Name and address for the record, please.
Ralph McNabb, 36372 Fairway. I want to just give you a visual. You're putting 80,000 gallons of fuel on that corner. Take seven of those large tankers, you've seen those run over the road. Take seven of those and just line them up on the property. There's no room for anything else but gas tanks under that ground. Now, let's take the distance that you're talking about. He can, this gentleman over here can say, okay, well, it's 150. I can say it's 93, because we measured it. Where did you measure from? You can, you can change that dimension to fit your, your scope. I'm going to tell you that Whispering Willows has one ingress and egress, and it's within that 100 feet. So, all of those thousands of people coming in and out are at risk because their driveway is there. So, you got them all, and then they can't get out. You got six-foot fences around the entire property. What are they going to do? Climb the fence to get out? They're a captive disaster waiting to happen. So, don't just give me this Greenmead stuff. That doesn't fit your, your, your story, but Whispering Willows does. It's a disaster waiting to happen, and each of your names is going to be on that document that says you voted for it.
Thank you very much, sir. And again, there is an approving resolution, so if we can keep our remarks towards that approving resolution. So, it's about 9:30, and I'd like to get to a vote here. So, we've all been here a long night, so go ahead and, any kind of remarks, please. Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Eileen McDonald, Livonia, Michigan. I know it's a long night, but this is a very important issue. I, I am just totally amazed that sometimes you just got to tell them no, regardless of what the situation is, and let it go to court. That's my opinion. If they want to do that, you know, they should think that why would they want to come? Why would they want to come here? If the community doesn't, if the people that live around them do not want this gas station here, why? It, it doesn't make sense to me. But I have a, somebody, Kathy Bilder asked me to ask you, is there any way that you could table this for further discussion?
This is your time to ask questions and talk, and we'll answer questions later on.
Okay, well, you never answer any of my questions. Very rarely do I get my questions.
This is your, it's public communication. This is your, it's public communication. It's your time to talk.
Okay. But that's just, that's my suggestion then, okay? It's a long night. You signed up for it, and, you know, we'll probably be here till 12 tonight, the rate we're going. So anyway, welcome to city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for my remarks about timing, it's just more for the respect of the people, to give everybody an opportunity to talk and, and vote. And I know some people are leaving, so I just want to get, get to the point for the people. So thank you very much, Betsy, and name and address for the record.
Betsy Calhoun, Granada, Livonia. You folks are, are leaders. You need to stop quaking in your boots over the fear of being sued. This is a sorry state of affairs. If this is how things are going to be, we're going to be at the whims of any corporation that wants to come in. I mean, you've got to fix whatever is wrong so that we can uphold our zoning for quality of life for the rest of the residents. This is not going to be the kind of community I want to stay in if it's whoever comes in gets their way over. Guys need to think about that.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Jerry Karasinski, 19488 Bainbridge. To the point that was discussed about water runoff and filtration, given that we've had more and more severe rains, I would be, ask you to look at the capacity of that water runoff system versus the amount of rain we get, especially during the summer. That water is going to runoff that property untreated at some point. And where is it going to go? That's a key factor in voting yes or no. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Kathy Malka, St. Martin's, Livonia. I just want to know how you can vote on a site plan when we still have questions like there's going to be a drive-through, there's not going to be a drive-through, we still don't have questions on all the environmental things, we have litigation pending against the zoning board. How can you go ahead and vote on a site plan when all those things are still outstanding? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your time. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lori Lee. I live in Willow Woods. I am absolutely outraged right now, and I am quaking. I wrote an email to one of, to Patty Radio when I wasn't able to go to the last meeting. And my points were, first was the negative impact it would likely have on the adjoining Rouge River Tributary. And, and hearing all this and, you know, that little bit, the dripping from the gasoline, you know, when you're filling your tank, and that, it's, it's that little stuff, and we've had flooding problems in our neighborhood, and so that's going to be the same problem that they have up there at the corner. There's, the amount of traffic, it's, I've lived there for 30 years. You can't turn easily out of that corner left without, you know, kind of like, oh, I think I can make it this time, you know, without killing yourself. So that's terrible, too. I think there's a whole bunch of things on these posters right here that you need to pay attention to because there's a lot of mad people in this room, a lot of people who do not want this in our neighborhood, we do not want this in the area. And I thank you, Laura Toy and Brandon McCullough, for saying no because we need, we need to put this down. It's not okay to have this. We have so many gas stations in the area, why in the world would we need another one? I mean, just being realistic, taking all the emotion out of it, why in the world would we need another gas station? But I'm also, like, I'm very, very environmental. I can't stand the thought of gasoline running into the Rouge River. I can't stand it. It's, it's unconscionable. We have to stand up for the environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, Chair. My name is Jim Bigga, Lancashire Road, Livonia, Michigan. Looking at the Livonia ordinances, I have not seen anything that discusses what defines public property, other than the saying, what parcels of Livonia are public property. It doesn't say 100 feet outside the golf course is not public property. What it says in 1216 dot zero six zero point four five, the land owned by the city in the northwest one-quarter section of Section 5, except approximately two, east 250 feet thereof, shall be known and referred to as Whispering Willows Golf Course. Okay, that is city property. The ordinance says you can't build a gas station within 100 feet of city property, of public lands. Golf course, public lands. I'm hearing that you're saying a golf course isn't public lands. Now, if it's not public lands, then the city of Livonia doesn't own it. Now, are you saying the city doesn't own Whispering Willows? Because that would be news to everybody in this room. But if the city does own Whispering Willows, then it's public lands. We, as the citizens, are the public. Sheetz is a entity. It's a business entity. They don't reside here. They are not a resident here. They are not part of Livonia. They may become if they build somewhere, but right now, the way your ordinances read, and you should be interpreting them, this is in violation of the 100-foot rule. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Name and address for the record.
Greg Rolco, Gulf Ridge Villa. You know, I had this board here. This is the ordinance that talks about the 100-foot rule. And it's very clear. It says, "Within 100 feet of any school, building, public park, or playground." And it does say, "Or where large people, a large number of people gather." The Detroit News has their hole-in-one contest on the seventh hole. They just had it a month ago, and there was thousands of people there, okay? Carter told me that he asked Mark that, about the 100-foot rule. And, and he said, well, he measured it from the clubhouse because that's where the people gather. And I said, it's a 350 feet, so it doesn't, it doesn't fly here. And I said, well, wait a minute. It's a park. Look at your master plan. Look at your maps. And then now Jim is just saying that it's, it's a public land. In either case, it's 100 feet, okay? I went out and took the tape measure and went across Newburgh, above the sidewalk, above the sidewalk, 94 feet, okay? The spirit of the law is 100 feet. 110 feet, 185 feet. The spirit of the law. Why? Because it's a safety concern, okay? That's the spirit of the law, okay? But forget greenmead. Whispering Willows, public land, park, that's, you're in violation of the ordinance. And that's the thing that frosted me so much, that ZBA just ignored the ordinance. They had four things that they had to hit, four conditions that the petitioner had to hit. Hardship, master plan, ordinance, and the concerns of the neighbors. They hit zero. And in their own words, they didn't have the right to do what they did, but they did it anyway. Then you wonder why we're so angry. Then you wonder why these people are willing to come to these meetings of state at 11 o'clock, okay? We don't want this. And you know in your heart we shouldn't have it, and don't be afraid of a lawsuit because that's a wimp. Don't be wimpy. It's an embarrassment to even talk like that.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Deb Christensen. I'm a Southsider, so like Patrick Brockway, this is, this really doesn't impact me, although it does. Environmentally, I do think it does. So the only person that I've heard in favor of this is the petitioner. You've had every resident that's been here at this mic saying they're, they're not in favor of this. And, I mean, that really should tell you something. It should tell you something. And like many of the other folks that have gotten up here have said the same thing, pull, pull up your bootstraps and vote no. We are here telling you that that's what we want you to do. We want you to vote no. We're not afraid of a lawsuit. It's our city, okay? Do the right thing, listen to your residents, your constituents that are out here. One thing I do want to say, I, there was some fear, this is not a threat, but I do think, though, that people that might want to run again, maybe one of the consequences is that you won't, you won't make it into office. So, I mean, just think about that. But I'm urging you, I'm urging you, begging you, in fact, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record. Thank you.
Nick Rolco, 20154 Edgewood. I've heard with great passion that you have a responsibility to act on the site plan. You have a greater responsibility, the responsibility to make sure your boards act according to their own standards and state law. That did not happen in this case. Your Board of Zoning Appeals did not duly notice this properly. That has not been denied. The zoning board of appeals did not follow its own standards, has been proven time and time again by testimony today. Your zoning board of appeals did not follow state law by proving economic hardship. That's not been disputed either. How can you act? How can this be a right decision to act on a site plan when the decision to grant a use variance was improper to begin with? At the very least, the ZBA should be directed to rehear this case, and if they choose to, fine. If they don't, at least we'll have that on record, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Denise Micah, great city of Livonia. The environmental concerns to me and everything that everybody has said truly outweighs the threat to me of a lawsuit. Livonia, it seems like lately, I don't know, people out here listening, Livonia now on my list says, we don't care about the environment, we're just scared of the businesses coming in. And you know what? We don't care about ADA either. So add that to the list of people, basic rights, and who's going to clean up the river? We've already had a spill in the city of Livonia, haven't we? Don't we have to get the tanks replaced? And that's at the next meeting because they have a problem? And they, which we don't know how much gas they use, that's another mystery here, for the tanks that we have to replace because we've had issues here. And is there a creek nearby there, too? Uh huh. So, and we already heard that those, that tributary is in jeopardy, there's things that have to be taken care of. So we're just adding fuel to that fire. So I want you to really think of this. And leaders lead? You have to make tough decisions? Yes. But the answer for tonight is a big no. I can't believe we're going through this, and you know what? Just yesterday, if anybody wants to talk about how late it's going to be, yesterday I was at a place, and it's now quarter to four in the morning, and I'm still here because I care about this city and what's going to happen. So you want to go to 1 o'clock? I don't care. I'll be up 24 hours. Who cares? We've got to do this. Vote no.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record. I like your sweater.
Frank Engler, Wisconsin Street. Well, I've, we talked to a lot of people, they're lawyers, engineers, they know a lot of things. But guess what? Sometimes you got to take the notions out of the situation and say, hey, we got a problem with ZBA. That's where the problem's coming at, not the council. So they're looking at it from the laws, law angle of it. Like I said, no emotion, look at law, and this is what is allowable. They won back and forth, the attorneys. So like I said, you have to look at the ZBA and why the issue's there, not of council. So like I said, if there's a problem, it's the ZBA, not council, looking at the problems with the site. And like I said, they're already saying, hey, we don't want a drive-through. They're going to work on that. Like I said, if we have problems with turning in the traffic, I was just at the Ron this one the other day, because I work midnights. Guess what? There are people that works midnights. So I went to the Ron this one. There's a spot there where you cannot turn left. You have to go further down to turn left. There's situations to the site plan. You can adjust it. We have to stop using emotions and everything. There's a law in place, we have to follow the law. That's about it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Cindy Fleming, Livonia. I implore all of you, city council people, to vote no on this motion because we have a broken system, that it appears that the ZBA, which you appointed, have not followed the law and created a disaster that you are quaking about being sued over. Let's not make two wrongs because we always know it doesn't make a right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Again, James Hooper, Livonia. Just want to reiterate, you are all now aware that there's environmental impact issues that are forefront. I'd like to remind the council, there was a, a big automaker here in Livonia who polluted groundwater. A huge plume affected a, a large portion of people's property in, in the Plymouth Road area, to the tune of millions and millions and millions of dollars. Now, while they may have taken responsibility for that, what happened was property values had to be readjusted, and I think they're, I, I have friends in that area, I believe that their property taxes were cut in half. That is part of the problem here. This is not an issue of NIMBA, not in my backyard. This is a larger issue than that. And you are now aware of that. You, you have to take personal responsibility for this because the city is now aware of this. Should this happen and there be a catastrophic leak, these residents would be able to sue the city, and the city is liable for this because you're just allowing this to happen. Please consider the implications of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Brandon Kress. Live in Willow Woods subdivision. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but the level of disinterest that some of the people are portraying compelled me to come up here and say something. You have 50, 60 people that came up here and spoke, hundreds of people here that are against this. I don't see anybody making an argument for this. And again, elected into a leadership position, you need to make difficult decisions, not the easy ones. And, and fear of being sued, in my opinion, is the easy decision, not the difficult one. So I, you know, moved here actually four and a half months ago. I'm one of the two newest residents in that subdivision. Moved here from Royal Oak, heavily populated area. I enjoy moving here. I like the quiet. My kids say they can see the stars here, and I'm going to be downstream from that water. So, you know, for our future, you know, like I said, I'm probably one of the youngest ones in that area with a young family. So I encourage you to, to take a deep look inside you, get interested, and, and make the right decision, not the easy one.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Barbara Glover. I live in Myrna Court. I wasn't going to speak tonight either, but I think one thing I'd like to say is that there's many issues in this city where the citizens of this city have lost trust in the city government. We can look at Alfred Noble Library, we can look at this millage that was proposed earlier this year, et cetera. This is just another one of these issues. You hear of all these people here, and some of them have left, but there's been lots of people speaking on this. Nobody has spoken that they want this gas station at this location. There's a lot of environmental concerns, which, to be honest with you, I'm surprised that you guys are supporting this. It looks like the overall majority are supporting this. I would not be worried about a lawsuit. You have to represent us. We don't want this. Have the courage to side with your residents against this. Nobody wants this gas station. We will support you if the city gets sued over this. And the other thing is, is it sounds like there's something wrong with this zoning board. You elect, you appointed these people that are on this zoning board. We didn't vote for these people. How come they have more power in this decision than you do? We should be able to vote for them then if this is going to be the case. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else for public? Hello, good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Julia Yasuhara, 36241 Club Drive, Gulf Ridge. Google, right? Google, right? So as I understand it, and I'm learning, again, thank you to all, in regard to the zoning board, if you're questioning the, what the zoning board's doing, right? If, and you have the final authority to change it, if the zoning board, if their findings can be thought to maybe be invalid or not correct, can you not use that as your obligation that you don't have to follow them because there are questions about the validity of the, of what was decided by them? So if, we're all telling you, and there's a lawsuit pending by our community, that the zoning board didn't follow the laws according to the law, and they should have. And you're concerned about lawsuits. If you, if you say no to this, you can say that, as I understand it, you can say that one of the reasons you're saying no to this, in addition to the fact that the entire room does not want this except Sheets, that it's because you feel that the laws weren't followed correctly. I mean, it's just, to me, it's just that simple. So please consider that. And thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else for audience communication, public comment? Anyone else? Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Okay, audience communication on the motion has been closed. I'm going to ask a question, then I'll go to Council President McCullough. I have a clarifying question to Mr. Torment, our planning department. Looking through Resolution A, Resolution A is on the floor with amended Resolution A removing the drive-through, which the petitioner has voluntarily removed the drive-through component of the resolution. For number one and item number three, one and three, I was referring to lighting. I know at the study meeting, we talked about lighting, and I had asked that there be no lighting on the exterior canopy. Will that be included in this resolution?
That has been incorporated.
If, as long as it has been, as long as you're aware that it's been included in the resolution.
Yeah, that should be, that was added to the resolution. I apologize.
Nope, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that was added, that there be no exterior electronics or lighting, whether it be, you know, illumination, whatnot. I know that was something that was brought up the last meeting, and I was just wondering if that was included. And then also for the sound, number 12, I believe there's some discussion about sound, and whether their, their speakers would be playing music or just being used for announcements and emergency reasons. Is there clarification on that?
I believe if you go back to the Planning Commission meeting, that was directed mostly towards the, the ordering at the drive-up. And so I think that's a moot point now with the elimination of the drive-through.
The elimination of the drive-through, voluntary elimination of the drive-through. Okay.
I'm not aware that Sheets plays any outdoor music or, or that. They could, maybe that's a question for.
Okay. Well, that would be, but that, a council member could offer to amend Resolution A and make sure that there be no exterior speakers for, for music to be played and whatnot. Correct? A council member could offer that?
I would think that would be a reasonable condition.
Okay. And then last question is the sale of alcohol and beer. Will that be prohibited here?
It is not specified in the resolution. That is a, been a longstanding policy of this body. No other gas station in the city of Livonia sells beer or alco, other alcohol products at retail. So that would be up to the council to continue that policy. I'm not sure it's appropriate to place in the resolution. Maybe it's something that could be voluntarily offered by the applicant. I know that it's been stated in the past, but maybe you'd want to refer that question to Mr. Carter.
Okay. But a council member could ask the petitioner to confirm there's no sale of alcohol and beer?
I think that'd be appropriate, yes.
Okay. All right, council, any questions for the staff, comments, or the petitioner? President McCullough?
I'd like to offer a substitute motion. I'd like to put this matter potentially, I would like to offer, what is it, the third one, to put it in committee of hold.
Okay, so there's a substitute motion on the floor. There's been support. So now there's a, another substitute resolution. And that substitute resolution is to, to, to substitute the other motion. So any audience communication for the substitute of the substituted motion? And that is only on the substituted motion. It cannot be on Sheets, it's only on the substitution of the substituted motion.
Well, related, Ralph McNabb, 36372 Fairway Drive. Related to that would be the question for a clarification from Sheets, whether or not their drive-through is going to be eliminated tonight and then reinstated once they get it built, and they've built it so they can put the drive-through through, they could come back to this, this entity and ask for a variance, correct?
And the comments are getting, again, we have to talk about the substituting of the substituted resolution. It's very confusing trying to keep this meeting on track. So any council, communicate, any comments from the council on the motion on the floor to substitute the substituted motion?
Correct.
Councilwoman Toy.
To that, to that point, the reason, the reason I, I supported the committee of the hold, because we beat this thing to death.
We haven't got to the committee of hold yet, substituting.
I know. But the reason being I supported that substitute is because we just heard that we're not even sure about the liquor yet, and it's not written in. And, you know, I've always been taught, if you're going to do anything, write it into the proposal as well.
Well, council, we can ask the petitioner questions.
Yes.
So, okay, any additional comments from the council on the substituted substituted motion? Okay, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk, on the substitution of the substituted motion.
President McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
No. So that is a tie vote, and the motion fails. So we are discussing, council, back to the original substituted motion of Resolution A with the removal of the drive-through. Council, this would be appropriate time to ask any additional questions of the petitioner.
Okay. Can we ask him about the liquor?
Councilwoman Toy.
Mr. Chair, then?
To the petitioner, please come up.
As for the sale of alcohol in any form, I believe the city of Livonia has an ordinance that does not allow convenience stores and gas stations to sell alcohol. We will not be selling alcohol at this location. We wouldn't even be able to get a license.
Thank you for that clarification.
And, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may to the petitioner. Sir, I know that you've been in other cities, you get a lot of TV time for your attempts to get into some other cities. And I just wondered, are you in any kind of lawsuits in those other cities at the moment?
I have no, I, we have some impending appeals, but very few. And frankly, you know, there, there's very little going on.
There's very little going on?
We have 25 approvals. I mean, from an approval standpoint, we have nothing going on, yeah.
Okay, no, that's fair. I just, I just wondered because I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to see how many cities you've gone to, you know what I mean, to, to see, you know, what kind of properties you look at. You, you know what I mean? You've got a track record that's very interesting. And I'm not putting you down, I'm just saying. Anyhow, with that said, thank you for answering the question.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toy. Council, any additional question for the petitioner?
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, call the question. And council, that ends council communication. Any audience communication? Roll call vote, please.
Voting on the approval.
On the Resolution A, for the approving of Resolution A without the drive-through component.
President McCullough?
No.
Councilmember Bozinski?
No.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
No.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye. Motion fails because it's a tie, three to three. Council, is there any additional motions to be placed on the floor?
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Scheel.
I'd like to offer a tabling motion until the next meeting.
Okay, there is a motion to table. Any support? Any support? Is there any support for the tabling motion to the next meeting? There is no support to table this to the next meeting, council. Is there a motion on the floor? Council, we have to make a motion, so.
Yeah, I'll support the motion to table this until next meeting.
Okay, that motion failed, so is there another motion?
I'll make the motion again to table until the next meeting.
Okay, there's been a motion to table this, and there has been support by Councilwoman Morgan. Council, any discussion on the motion to table to the next meeting?
Which is November 5th, Wednesday, November 5th.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, there's a mo, Councilwoman Toy.
If I may to my colleague, what is the rationale on that? Because we're missing a member?
We'll have seven people. Well, we should. We should have seven people barring no emergencies.
Correct. Thank you.
Council, any additional comment on the motion on the floor to table to November 15th?
November 5th.
November 5th, pardon me, November 5th.
Wednesday, November 5th.
Wednesday, November 5th.
Day after election.
Day after election. Okay, council, there's no more discussion amongst the council for motion on the floor. Any audience communication on the motion to table until November 5th? Any conversation from the audience would be appropriate this time to table this to the next meeting. And just so the audience knows, we have, as a council body, we have to make some sort of decision, whether that be denying, approving, as you've seen, a whole host of motions have been offered this evening. So to table this would be one of those decisions that we have the authority to do, but we can't just not do anything at all. Name and address for the record, please.
Denise Mica.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I would like the attorney to say, to tell me that is, has there been a situation where a vote has failed, and it just failed, and nothing, there's no action on that item at this time? I'd like to know that.
Okay, thank you. Are your comments done? I'll have, I'll have your question answered after your comments are done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Jerry Karasinski, 1948 Bainbridge Avenue. Seeing as there's a deadlock, I totally support tabling this until the November 5th meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Christopher Martin, great state of Michigan. It's over. You took a vote. This motion has failed. That's what has taken place here. And any further resolution to table this, or let's say, the vote has been taken. You don't have a yes on this. A tie is considered a no. Okay? That's what the deal is. It's unfortunate you don't have seven, but I've seen it many times at the ZBA meetings. They're lucky sometimes years ago, if they had a quorum, if they had four people that showed up out of seven. Okay? And, and when four people showed up at the ZBA, they had three no votes. You know why? Because those people weren't there. Okay? So you already took a vote. This thing's over. It's done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, any comments? Thank you very much.
Hi, Deb Christensen. What he said, basically, yeah, I mean, I've been here at city council meetings. It's been a tie, and a tie means that it doesn't pass. Why are we doing a table? I don't get it. We're done. We all want to go home. Let's be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Search name and address for the record.
Greg Ralco, Gulf Ridge Villa. You know that by now. It is over right now. It is over. You don't get a chance to do another one because you didn't like it. Okay? It's over. And, and we didn't get a chance to do another one for the last 15 months, and we've been persistent. We're persevering, and we're not going away. Okay? We're not going away. So it, because you didn't get your way, doesn't mean you table it. That's, 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 that's embarrassing for you to say that, number one. And it's, and it's slapping every person in this room across the face. Because we don't care about you. We didn't get our way, and we're going to do it again until we get our way. It's disgusting. This is why we are angry. Can we be any clearer here? Okay? Can we be any clearer? Thank you. I say thank you. You did it back in January, and you said no in January, and you said no again this evening. Thank you. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you for taking us seriously, and thank you for representing us. That doesn't get said many times to government officials, but I will say it tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
And I got a clarification for the city attorney.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, to the city, because I was incorrect. Can you please help me out here and clarify the motions?
Sure. So a motion can fail without us having to consider further motions. However, if further motions are made and seconded, the body does have to consider those motions. And because the motion that, that just failed was a substitute motion, should this motion, which is also a substitute motion, fail, we would still have to consider the original denying motion.
Right. That's what I was.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yep.
So again, I'm just trying to be as transparent as I can with the audience, just because we have these rules. And I know it can be kind of confusing, and as you can see, it's difficult to work through some of these, these things. So any additional audience communication on the motion to table to November 5th? Okay, so no more comments, audience communication has been closed for the motion. Yep. And then we're going to go back to the council to discuss the motion on the floor to table to November 5th. Thank you. Council President, go ahead.
Through the chair, to Mr. Carter. So just for clarification to put on the record, that in the event right now, if this substitute motion fails, then we would have to then go back to the first one? Is that sort of what you're saying?
Right. There was never a vote on the original denying. There was only a substitute motion made to, to move on to a new motion. So the denying motion is still on the floor if the substitute motions to that motion fail.
What if I withdrew that?
If you withdraw, well, you, you would only be able to do that once the substitutes have failed, but you, you as the initial motion maker could withdraw your motion at that point.
Okay. As long as you're, as long as the supporter is also okay with that, correct?
Correct.
He was a supporter on the denying.
So you made the, Councilwoman Toy made the original motion way back when?
So my, and my last, just, just for the record.
I'll shrink like a daffodil.
If hypothetically, this one fails, other motion, this, this issue is done, correct? If, say, say this, this substitute motion fails.
Table.
Or the table is failed, and then it comes back and the maker of the, the motion, the original resolution withdraws, and the supporter withdraw, this item is done.
The consideration of this site plan would then be done.
Okay. That's all I have.
Question to our city attorney. So if that be the case, can the, is the petitioner allowed to come back and resubmit for a site plan? And if so, is, or if not, is there a time limit?
The commissioner, or the, I'm sorry, the petitioner is allowed to resubmit site plans, although why a petitioner would resubmit the same site plan again, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, council, any additional comment on the motion to table to November 5th? Council?
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Toy.
I, you know, I just want to commend you for doing a good job. You've never held a gamble before. And I'm telling you, it can be a little dicey when you get into this. It's kind of like making sausage. This is the true form of making sausage. So don't be discouraged. I mean, you know, we follow Robert's Rules of Order, and, and we have to have that rhyme or reason to it. So we're all trying to understand those Roberts. And, you know, there's, there's moves people make when they want, when they want to keep it alive. And I think that's what the city attorney was pointing out a little bit to all of us. So it's a good learning lesson. So thank you, Rob, for handling this.
How the sausage just made, right?
Yeah, that's it. That's it.
Spoken like a true Italian. Okay. Okay, any additional comment on the motion on the floor to table to November 5th? Council, any additional comments? Okay, council communication is over. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
President McCullough?
No.
Councilmember Bozinski?
No.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
No.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye. The motion fails tied, three to three. So.
So now we go back to the original motion?
Original motion on the floor was for denial offered by Councilwoman Toy and seconded by President McCullough. Councilwoman Scheel, question?
So a denying resolution is on the floor right now.
Correct.
If the denying resolution passes, well, if it fails, that's where we're done. That's what you said, correct?
Right. In either, in either event.
In either event. Well, if it passes, then let's say at the next meeting, one of us who chose to vote no decides to bring it back up for a yes vote. Could we do that?
It's got to come from the prevailing side. It's got to come back from the prevailing side.
Yeah, the, the motion would have to be remade by someone who voted yes.
Who voted yes.
Right.
So it would have to be remade by someone who voted yes.
Absent another petition from the petitioner that went through the site plan approval process from the beginning.
Okay.
To reconsider this same motion and this site plan.
Okay.
Someone on the prevailing side would have to supply the motion to rehear it.
So on the prevailing side would be someone who voted no?
No. On the, well, it depends how this vote goes.
Yeah.
But assuming that the, well, assuming that the denying motion passes.
Correct.
The prevailing side would be the denying side. So.
Would be someone who voted no. Correct?
No, would be someone who voted yes on the denying motion.
Oh, yes, on the denying motion. I get it. I was backwards. Yep, thank you.
Councilwoman Toy, then Councilman Bozinski.
And we don't know where the mayor's at on this because she holds veto power. So that's another thing that can enter into this.
American veto.
Yeah, it very well could enter into this. I don't know what her stance is. I don't see that she sent us a non-veto letter, maybe unless you guys saw it, you know, sometimes you overlook things. But the mayor does have the final decision on any vote we basically take. And to override her veto, we need five votes. So just keep that in mind. See, isn't it fun having a lesson in politics?
I have a question.
Civic government. Councilwoman Bozinski and Councilwoman Scheel.
Okay. We're speaking on the denying.
We're speaking on, now we are speaking of the denying, the original denying resolution made by. made by Counselwoman Toy, seconded by Counsel President McCullough.
Yes. So obviously my vote probably seemed unexpected because I spent a lot of the night explaining why I have concerns about denying a site plan and why, you know, and I, I maintain my concerns. But at the end of the day, I am an environmentalist and the reason I could not support the original plan is because I have concerns about adding a new gas station to a site that is prone to flooding, that is next to the Rouge River Creek. And, and that, that is where I was able to, to vote on that, on that one. That is where I stand on it. And I just wanted to be clear about what my vote was and why. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counselwoman Scheel, on the denying motion.
So I wanted to go back to what Counselwoman Toy was saying regarding the mayor's veto. The mayor would, would only have the option to veto something that's been voted on in the past, correct?
Correct.
So we have, the other motions, all the motions so far have failed, so there's nothing for her to veto or non-veto.
Correct. And the mayor can't veto a denying motion.
Okay.
Yep. That's okay.
All right, counsel, any additional comments on the motion on the floor? All right, we're going to go to the audience to discuss the denying resolution. Any audience communication? Going once, going twice? Okay, audience communication has been closed. Counsel, any additional comments on the denying resolution? There are no additional comments. Madam Clerk, please take the call. Roll the vote.
Clarification.
Counselwoman Morgan.
So a no vote would be against the denying.
Yes.
A yes vote would be for it, correct?
Yes.
Just want to clarify.
So a no vote if we know...
Everybody knows what they're voting.
Yeah, you vote no on the denying or you can vote yes on the denying.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? If I may, just, just before this vote goes, through the chair to Mr. Carter. So right now, if the denying, if the denying motion ties, then in theory, it would...
It's done.
Is it, it's done? Or no? What happens in that?
If the denying motion ties, then no motion has been carried on this item.
Okay.
But...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I'm good.
Okay. So there is a motion on the floor for denying. Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
President McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Scheel?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Toy?
Yes.
Councilmember Donovan?
No. The motion passes four to two. The denying resolution passes four to two. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. The unfinished business of number 16 finally ends. Mr. President, would you like the gavel back?
Listen, I wanted to say, this is, he did, he did very well with the gavel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Okay, there is no new business. We are going to go to audience communication for any items that were not on the agenda. Any items that were not on this evening's agenda, you have three minutes to discuss items not on the agenda, please.
One second. Okay, Denise Mica.
One second, ma'am.
Great city of Livonia.
One second. One second, please. There's still business being conducted. If you could please leave quietly so we can get business going. Thank you very much, everyone.
People are going to miss this.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Okay.
Just give it a second.
Right here.
Pause for, just so people can hear you. So the TV picks it up later on.
Martha Center.
Give me a minute. Yeah, thanks, thank you, thank you. I see what you're saying. I just want your TV, the TV to pick you up, Denise. All right, if you could please exit the auditorium if you're not participating in the meeting. We still have additional comments, please.
Just have her go ahead.
It's audience communication in the meeting, so.
But if she spoke at the beginning, she can't speak at the end.
Oh, yeah. You spoke at the beginning of the meeting. Wait till the study, wait till, you're going to be here for the study, so.
Okay, all right.
If you could please leave quietly so we can continue to conduct the business of the meeting, please. One second, sir. Thank you. I just want everybody to hear you. One second. One, one second, one second. All right, if you could please be quiet so we can conduct the rest of the meeting, please give everybody opportunity to have their voices heard. Okay, we're going to go for audience communication. Good evening, sir. You have three minutes to discuss anything not on the agenda. And if you'd like, sir, there is a handicap podium up there. It might be easier for you with a handheld mic, whatever works best for you.
I think I'll be fine right here.
Awesome. Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes.
My name is Keith Lusgawa. I'm a citizen of Michigan, southeastern Michigan. I just want to bring three things to counsel's attention in regards to the upcoming lease season with compost, that it's upon us, but there's some real turmoil in the industry due to the largest waste, residential waste hauler and how they've conducted themselves in business. So I'm here to let you know that, one, I, I too have been talked to by legal, not to say anything that might get me in trouble. So I kind of wanted to say that I can offer a solution. I work with a great group of men where we have handled Livonia's leaves when it was done through Waste Management, Rizzo, Green for Life, and now we have the new guy. The new guy has not paid the vendor from last year for all the leads that they handled. I think you guys should know that. And so I'm going to leave it to Carter, too, because I can't really say a lot, but I can say enough to, you guys should take a peek at it and see what's happening. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. Okay. Anything not on the agenda tonight? Three minutes, please.